We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:04 PM. Thank you all for coming, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Alright, at the start, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add P5 personnel, employee 814-2023D, and P6 personnel, employee 814-2023, to executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74206-1B and D. We have a motion in a second and a third. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing them, the motion carries. I now need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Who approves all the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing them, the motion carries. Moving on into meeting announcements. I would like to take this time to remind everyone that our board meetings are our business meetings held in public, and they are not public board meetings. The board is governed by Idaho Code Title 33, Chapter 5, Idaho Administrative Procedures Act, or IDAPA, and we do follow our district policies. The time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It is not a time to engage with the board, nor is it a time for question and answers. The board in its discretion may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided. However, no discussion or conversations take place. All input will be received within a three-minute time limit. All public input will be civil and respectful, address the board, not the audience, address issues, not persons, and please refrain from applause, snickers, whispers, quiet comments, etc., as it interferes with due process. If you are asked by a trustee to stop with comments, you must stop, or you will be asked to leave the meeting. If repeated requests by a trustee are disregarded, the meeting will be recessed or adjourned depending on the severity of the issue at hand. Are there any other announcements? Okay. We will move now into public input. The first person addressing the board will be Celeste Sutton. Is she here?
Oh, I gotta go over there.
You do, please come to the podium and state your name.
I'm Celeste Sutton. I'm one of the parents who children were affected by the rezoning. And I would like to bring to the board the affidavit. So if you, if a person cannot show two proofs of living in the district, I would like to propose that the board figure a way to kind of do some due diligence and check whether or not the people who are going and falsifying affidavits truly should be in our district. So, that's one of my largest concerns because I know children that go to the school that my child should be going to, and they don't live in the district, and they're falsifying records to be in our district. And it's a consequence that my kid has to now deal with. And I would like to make sure that we minimize that, or mitigate it. I volunteer. They're public records, right? I will volunteer in my time to come make sure that children in our district should be in our district.
Can I add some clarification, ma'am chair? Yes, okay. I wholeheartedly get your sentiment, that's why we closed our borders last year. However, our legislature decided to legislate from Boise, and now all districts are open. So unfortunately, we can't even tell people who don't live in the district that they can't attend.
I agree, but there's a difference with that out-of-district zone transfer request versus me saying I live in the district. I could do what they do. I could go have somebody that lives next to Garwood go with me and notarize a document.
They don't have to do that anymore.
They don't, well then why is that still up there on the website of an option?
I have no idea why.
Okay, well then that should...
But thank you for bringing that to our attention, yeah, I didn't know that was up there. It has been removed?
I saw it just recently when I went on...
It was taken?
It was, okay, alright.
Well, thank you for your comment.
Next person is Rebecca Scragg.
I'm Rebecca Scragg. I wanted to talk to you guys tonight about the Garwood rezoning. It happened so suddenly. There was no public input. There was no pre-notification. There... It happened so quickly. I don't think that was fair to the people within the zone, to our students, to the families. I personally know a family who wanted to stay in the zone, and they're renting. And so they signed a two-year lease in order to stay in the zone. And then a week later, you guys announced that we were rezoning this year. If they had had more time, they would've been able to take better action for their family. So, the short notice on the part of the board has led to large consequences for these families. Transportation issues for families who want to be rezoning back to Garwood, and other things like that. It's just, I think I speak for myself and many other people. Yes, we understand it was necessary, but the way that was performed broke our trust in you guys. And we are so disappointed in the way that you have all handled it. It is not fair to us. And we don't appreciate that.
You are heard.
They moved it up.
We just moved it from the back, so that Jessica could sit up here.
Okay. No, but the chair blocking the aisle, that's the fire motion issue. Is there a way we can move her more forward?
We can move her wherever we want.
So that she's not... You can't block the aisle. Are you sure?
Yep.
Okay. Next is Ethan Jelinek.
Well, I'm gonna take things on a sharp right turn, maybe left, I'm not sure. I, along with Thomas Thompson, am raising a mixed-race child in North Idaho, currently a freshman this year. The kid is black. I am not some liberal from California. I graduated from Launner's Ferry High School. I'm a veteran. And basically, when I was younger, I didn't think that racism existed. I'm sure there are people here that don't really think that racism is a factor. My first days in boot camp changed that. I was walking down the passageway, all of a sudden heard, "Who's this? The honky thing he is?" And I looked around, and there was just a whole bunch of black guys on either side of me. They were talking to me. That kinda shook me. Then I started listening and paying attention to what's going on. I'm hearing the guys from North Carolina, Mississippi, Alabama, N-word this, the guys from Texas, big wetback, slur after slur, talking about their shipmates, this is in the Navy. By the time I left boot camp, I wasn't... Nobody was called a honky anymore. Nobody was called the N-word. We were working together fairly well. Now, throughout my time in the military, yes, I experienced racism to some degree. But what our boy is dealing with now in these schools is worse than anything I saw in the military following those first few days at boot camp. He's not bringing these things to our attention. He barely accepts me as a legitimate parent or person in his life. But I'm there, and we're uncovering things, we're going through his phone, overhearing it. People or other people are bringing things to our attention. But he's called the N-word. In malicious manner. I mean, it's not my N, whatever, it's you effin'. He's called monkey. He's called slave. Some of these things are coming from people that consider themselves his friends. And really, what all of this indicates is that these kids have no indication of what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. Now, I don't believe that these are the parents doing this. I don't believe that in most cases, the parents are that misguided. I believe that it's the same thing with these kids. They're coming up with a new vernacular in school. They're bringing home words that we have to look up and phrases. This is something that is them going off the rails, and they need some reassurance in terms of, or reaffirmation in terms of what's acceptable and what's not. I'm not advocating for any race theory, anything of that effect. What I am asking the board to do is think on a micro scale about these issues. Think about, don't lump yourselves in with political agendas, things of that nature. Think on a micro scale of what's right for our kids, and really try to put things, and bring in speakers and things to send messages to these children. Dang, that was quick.
Thank you. And thank you for your service. Ethan?
Can I ask you a question?
Would you mind coming back into the podium?
I'm just curious, how old is your judge?
He's a freshman this year. Okay, thank you.
Would you mind putting your contact information on this form for us?
Absolutely.
That's why I think that's... Is there a pen?
There are several.
Okay.
I have a question, where do we start this?
Today.
We don't blow that one?
Not today.
They don't want everybody to talk when they want to, for however long they want.
I know.
We do have the ability to offer additions. Yeah.
Could I have a couple more minutes?
Yeah. Please.
And now I'm all off track, because I tried to summarize. But, but basically, well, yeah, he is experiencing, he is experiencing things worse than I ever experienced. Really, I think that, I remember when I was in high school, and I remember some of the images that were put in front of us where they talked about venereal diseases, or the imagery around drunk driving incidents where there was skin hanging from a mirror, and the stories that the first responders told of extraditing, or extracting individuals from vehicles. And those impactful images really spoke to me. And with respect to the venereal disease one, that actually changed the course of my life and informed some of my decisions going forward. As did, you know, the imagery of drinking and driving. These kids need to hear impactful stories from people that experienced these things. I'm a white guy, and all of us that are parents in here, our kids don't listen to us when they get to that age. We all know that. We're all full of crap, we don't know what we're talking about. But they need to hear from people that have actually experienced these things. It is real, it is part of our community, and this is a community problem. This isn't just a school problem. You may say, people may say, when he goes, "Put him on a team. Have him play baseball, have him play football." Some of these things happened in the dugout. These are kids that he's wrestled with, played football with. This isn't something that's changed from a team environment or team atmosphere. We really need to impart on these children just how harmful and hurtful some of these things can be. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is Suzie Stranahan.
Hello, my name is Suzie. So, I have two kids in Lakeland High School, one a freshman and one a junior. So my son's experience in middle school was overshadowed by a horrible bullying and toxic culture problem. This relates to what Ethan was talking about. He is high-functioning with autism and struggles with social skills. So, our concern is the toxic culture and this behavior has festered and turned into a bigger issue that Mr. Hoffman is now inheriting. After doing research and meeting with Lisa Arnold, I've learned that the middle school has lost a proactive, evidence-based program that is meant to improve problems like this, sources of strength. What we have been dealing with our son is mental health issues that is a result of bullying. I'm confident in saying that he's not the only one. I believe it's tragic to lose a program like this because teachers and counselors are not given the resources to improve school culture, norms, school connectedness, and suicide prevention, which is something that I worry about every day. It was evident at the end of the school year that Mr. Birch was overwhelmed with these problems and was in a situation handling them alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Phillip Messick.
Hello, board, my name is Phillip Messick. I'm a parent of two kids that went to Garwood until 55 days ago. Well, actually, not even 55 days ago. On April 28th, there was some discussion in the neighborhood about the board rezoning school districts. I spoke to one board member on this board tonight on the telephone, and they said there was no way the board could do a zone change for this school year. And even if they did, which would be unlikely, if not impossible, they would have to create a grandfather clause for kids that attended the school the previous year. We said it was too late to change for the 23-24 school year, and it was just a brief 10-minute or less discussion that the public overheard and overreacted to. Then on July 12th, 55 days before the first day of school, Lisa Arnold emails the parents saying, "Hey, we did a zone change." And she also sent an email that the CDA press got ahead of her, and she wanted to wait till she had a map. There's still no map published. Would we even know today if she hadn't sent that email because the CDA press leaked information? Would we even know? Or would we find out when we show up to Garwood later this month, and we're told, "Oh, by the way, you're at the wrong school, sorry." And what's ridiculous, too, is in telemeeting last week, on the 9th, you had the wrong map posted on your website. People were buying houses and signing apartment leases with the wrong map up on your website. That's on you, that's not on the public. So my question is, why not a grandfather clause? Every other school district that I could find online had done grandfather clauses for kids that were in schools. I was rezoned when I was in grade school. My parents panicked, but don't worry, the school board said, "We're not gonna move kids that already went." Your grandfather did. Yes, you have to provide your own transportation because they can't run two-school bus routes, but you're guaranteed a spot if you can provide transportation. And that was honored through the remainder of my elementary school career. And then again, what happened to me in high school. A simple solution that you could've got if you asked the public for feedback, which you claim you did at your cookies and coffee, and whatever other meetings you guys do, would've been, why not rezone the, excuse me, the Corbin Crossing, the Apartments, the Brookshire, and then Cascade Place to John Brown for all new enrollees that move in or haven't been enrolled, and allow a grandfather clause for existing kids that have built relationships with the teachers, the school, as well as trust? We heard about the levy via social media, dojo, emails, and texts repeatedly, over and over and over again. Not once were we told, "Hey, Garwood rezones on the table." Yes, it was published on your meeting notes that were hard to understand. We have jobs, we have kids. That's what your guys' job is. You're on the board because you care about the kids, or so we thought. So this is ridiculous. "Oh, and by the way, when you rezone 55 days before school starts, charter schools are full, they go in February, March. So that's not an option, sorry, I took that away from you." Guess what, you're going to John Brown unless we approve your waiver because you have no other option, because there's 55 days. That sounds like something Jay Inslee would do. I mean, just get the letter out there, you know who he is. So it's just ridiculous that the board does reactive response and is not proactive in rezoning. There's new neighbors going in right now on 53 and Myers that are gonna have apartments, houses. There's apartments going down in Brookshire. Why not rezone before the kids move in? Just a thought. Not pocket sign.
Do you have more to state?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Next is Anita Dupick. I always get her name wrong. Okay. We all received this? Did you all read it? Okay. And then last is Shannon Ryder. Is she here? Okay.
It's very big change of topic. Thank you for letting me address you tonight. I'm Shannon Ryder, I think most of you know who I am, but I am the principal assistant at Timberlake Middle School and Timberlake High School, and I am a mama to a 4th grader at Sparwick Elementary and an upcoming 6th grader at Timberlake Middle School. And I just wanted to take a few moments to talk to you about Alex and how we use it at the middle school, and how we found it to be very beneficial for especially our high-achieving students, ones that are just super hard to challenge. It's just an ongoing struggle. We have such passionate teachers who spend endless hours working on it. But that program, because it already maxes out at about 8th, 9th grade, Alex goes well beyond that. So we've been able to see kids super excited about the time that they spend in their learning path because they're working towards, or they're in the program that the high school's using. So it's been very motivating for them. Their self-esteem, that just like trying to fan that flame before it goes out. Like, it's cool to, like, math, it's cool to be excited about learning and to be a high achiever. We've found that program to be the best tool that we've seen to be able to do that. So, we would love to be able to continue using it. As MTSS lead for our buildings, I definitely spend a lot of my time focusing on our intensive and strategic learners, as a lot of us do. And so, our advanced learners can sometimes not necessarily fall to the wayside because we do spend time focusing on them, but especially there's a gap between gate ends at 6th grade, and then we have our some of the 8th graders just trying to make it meaningful. Meaningful, sorry, not just extra work for them. So that's what we've been able to use, Alex 4. And basically, just if the board has questions about it, if they're curious about what it looks like, how it's been implemented, I would just encourage you to reach out. I know Keith Newberger has used it. I spoke with him today. Katie Sanders has used it, and so they just have a lot of experience in, well, I can't say a lot of experience, but this year's experience in seeing the program and what it can do. And I would, of course, be happy to speak to you anytime about it. And then when we take these programs away, just thinking about what are we putting in place for these students so close to the school year, let's start with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Moving on to the board accolade. We did receive a PowerPoint on the steam camp as a thank you. It looks like it was a pretty dynamic camp, and had a lot of kids. Okay, next we have the financial report for August. Good evening, could you please speak to us about this?
Do you have any questions?
On the financial report at this moment, I do. Does anybody else?
Do you have any balance figure?
So, I wanted to bring that up to the board. There was no questions about the specific financial report for August. We're working through preliminary audit preparation. We have our auditors on site the 31st and the 1st coming up. It's looking like we are going to be dipping into our budget balance more than we anticipated when the budget was prepared last year. So I'd like to propose maybe having a workshop or a meeting to discuss that, to see where we can tighten our belts for the next fiscal year.
I know at a previous meeting, I inquired about getting a better understanding of the school accounts, and that was gonna come back to the table. Do we have any idea when that will be?
We've kind of started on that, but we're kind of in the middle. In the middle of audits, so we're...
You guys have a lot going on, I absolutely get that.
I will strive to have that on the September one, if we can. New thing tonight, you'll see a financial follow-up document. We'll make sure that's on there. If not, September, October at the latest.
Okay. Good job, I don't have questions on the financial stuff we presented. Anybody else? Thank you. Oh, you're doing a great job, so thank you for that. We have a facilities report, which is actually an update of where we stand on facilities.
This might be... He's way in the back.
Come over here, man. That was a heavy sigh.
Good evening. Once again, I've got Mr. Luke Neal with Emmer Construction to give probably the final update on the remodel over there. And that'll give it over to Luke.
So, heavy sigh, it's been a long July, but as you can see, the site is about complete. We actually have a final inspection on site happening tomorrow. Paint's completing in the next two weeks, but in the next week. And the only part of the project that will get close to the school year is the original gas piping was not up to code. And so, there was a change add to, to change the gas piping to higher. And so that's gonna happen in the next two and a half weeks. But currently, they said it would be completed before school started. With the weather we have right now, doesn't look like a problem for the gas heating in the school rooms. But, no, the project went great, has been going great. Once again, appreciate the opportunity to serve the community here in this way. And with the help of the district, it went very smoothly. I have Tech West, and had a really great, so far, seven weeks? Maybe?
Quick seven weeks.
So, yeah, really excited, and it went fantastic online. I hope the same was for the community in the board.
I do know that we had asked previously if all of the siding materials were purchased in one go.
And so, we did order them in the last couple weeks. I was just talking to Mike about it. My project manager sent me the takeoffs, or reviewed them last week, I believe, and then he ordered them in the last bit, whenever. The bit been ordered now, we're just looking for storage and stuff.
Did you guys want an update on Lakeland High School?
Yes, please.
Everybody knows the scenario over there with the fire. So, fire occurred on the 2nd. I spotted it on my way out, and pulled into the parking lot. Lucky for me, there was a wrath from PD sitting in the parking lot, which I quickly told them to get fire en route. Fire responded very quick. Within 40 minutes, I had the first contractor on scene, restoration contractor, to start the preliminary cleanup of the water and everything that came down. The crews have been working 16-hour days, pretty much seven days a week, with the end goal of September 1 as the final. Everything's good to go, cleaned up, ready for school. There might be a couple little punch list items that won't disrupt the school, we can do after hours if need be, but everything is going great, and timing was not ideal. But I had, I've got a good reserve of contractors that have our best interest at heart, and they've been working like rock stars. So, anyway, that's that. And then Spirit Lake is coming along. Carpet shouldn't have been done today, and then we'll move forward with that. But that's cool. I can't think of any other major updates regarding buildings specifically that I can pass on right now. Did you guys have any questions about any of that stuff?
With respect to the cause of the fire, did we check all the other to make sure everything is, so we're not gonna have another fire?
Yeah, so what happens is, they should've been turned off or unplugged. There's hundreds of feet of heat tape on that roof. One got missed, is the best thing I can tell you. I don't know why, but there is nothing plugged in now. And we are actually gonna go through and start replacing the heat tape on the roof. They say about every seven years. We started that about five years ago, doing areas, you know, that looked bad, we replaced them. But we're just gonna go ahead and go completely through the building, as well as the other buildings that we have heat taped currently on.
How many of our buildings have heat taped?
Spirit Lake has a small run, Athel has a small run, John Brown has a small run, of course Lakeland High School, Timberlake High School has a small run. Garwood has a small run, Bennekever has a small run.
Okay, so we don't have any on the middle schools?
No, no. And they're used for roof drains. That's what they're intended to do, and that's where that one was, was their roof drain. Like, it was supposed to be, for some reason it failed, and we had what we had. So, I'm making the steps to correct that, moving forward, so we don't build it again. So...
That's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
Good to have that sound junior high so far.
Great, great. It's good to hear. I'm excited about Spirit Lake and Athol next summer.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you for being here.
Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the previous meeting, the minutes of subcommittee meetings to be accepted, the HR items and the regular and special bills. Are there any comments on the minutes from the previous meeting? Any discussion? No? Uh any comments on the policy committee minutes? No? Uh the HR items? Or the board book memo? I thought we had something on one of those, but maybe not. Which brings us to the bills list. So if you want to come forward. I have a few questions. Uh we paid for a lift rental, but we approved the purchase of a lift and we're told that the lift is in the district. What's up with that?
The lift rental, um that should have been included in the purchase of the paper. Um it's basic. If it's the same thing, which um which vendor are you looking at?
Um Machinery Northwest. It says maintenance lift rental for lights upgrade at LMS and SLE. This might be called.
I can answer that.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, perfect.
So we have the district owns an in- an indoor lift and we just purchased an outdoor lift. We used to use our indoor lift for outdoor stuff. It's just not adequate. Summertime, as we all know, is super busy. I had two big projects at the same time. So our our lift that we own was not available in order to get things done before school started. I had to rent a secondary lift so that that project could still
Okay.
Be finished. And so sometimes that will have to happen based on scheduling.
Okay, so sometimes we'll have to still rent lifts even though we purchased it to prevent.
Yeah, I can't justify, right now I can't justify purchasing another indoor lift. I thought about having one for the northern school and then one down here.
Okay.
I'm not quite there yet. The times that this happens where I have overlapping projects is pretty rare.
Okay.
So um but there will be a time every so often that you see that and that's that's the cause.
Okay.
So.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. We have an online math curriculum that was purchased for Syngage Learning. Um do we know what grades this is for?
The algebra.
It's the algebra, okay.
It's actually the algebra, algebra dual trade and geometry. Geometry.
Okay. Um our iCrim policy renewal?
Yes.
Um was that increased?
It is increased. Um there was quite a few payouts last year for iCrim. Um and as such, they passed that along to us. Um the Potlatch School District, one of their high schools went down. And it was a pretty excessive claim in addition to some other claims. Pocatello, sorry. Pocatello had their eyes and bird down. And then they had some other claims that were pretty excessive last year. So.
Okay.
Yes, it was about twenty, one thousand more than we thought of it.
Okay. Um but turn it in renewal. What is what is that?
That's a program that we've used at the high school for probably the last fifteen years. Um so when uh in the English classes, when they are assigned to write a paper, they submit it to turn it in and it does kind of a spot check for
Major's.
Majorism. And then they can, they have to have a certain percent or less before they can turn it in.
So those were my questions. Does anybody else have any questions? Dave, do you have any questions? All right. That was it?
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you for the breakout. Do appreciate it.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Um so for the items that are like the same every month that I have already broken out, would you still like me to continue breaking those items out?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, with that being said, um if there are no further comments, questions or discussions, uh I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll know that we approve a consent agenda submitted.
Sure. Having a motion in a second, all favors the aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the superintendent follow-up in old business. Do we have an estimate when the light post at THS is going to be repaired?
Eighteen. It's uh eighteen five.
No, 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 when it's going timeframe.
Mike, do you have an estimate?
I don't. Pardon my, I'm going to follow up with the company tomorrow that that they did. And they submitted their insurance, but I I haven't spoke with them since last week.
Okay, because I was actually out there a couple of days ago and it's like in the roadway. So I'm kind of wondering if we can like scooch it so that it's not
We can. I didn't want it to corrupt too much in case insurance wanted to come take photos. I didn't want to start cleaning up. My biggest priority was making the pole safe, which we did immediately after it went down as part of the tower. Um but I'll I'll get your information tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great because that should be resolved. Um sad to see that Colby resigned. Colby. Okay, the bleachers at LHS?
Yes, so um when we were talking about facilities, that was one area that came up and so uh we paid for an engineering company to come out and look at the bleachers and um they needed some additional supports, but the structure itself was sound and not unsafe. So our facilities uh crew put some additional bracket supports in where the engineering firm said they needed to be. And so that bleacher section is good to go. We don't have to do anything else with it.
Do we not need to um pour any more concrete or do anything of that nature?
Nope. That was really good news because we were concerned that it was going to be costly. Basically, it was the cost of the engineer's report.
Any other discussion or comments on the superintendent follow-up?
If I could ask him a side question, where are we on the Lakeland High School track project?
It's being uh it's in the works right now. So when I was there last week, uh all the asphalt and everything is gone and they're leveling it.
Do we know if it will be done before school starts?
I believe, Mike, is the high school track?
Oh, is Jimmy out there?
Matt's here.
Oh, that's right.
Hello.
I heard briefly a little bit.
Do you know that when they're thinking the track will be done?
So I met with the owner on Friday because the the project is behind. The the company that does the track is doing a track in Washington and the guy that runs it got in a car wreck, so uh they think they're about seven to ten days behind. So they started the tear off and then it stopped. And so I've been calling, where are we at, where are we at? Like a contractor, it was hard to get him on the phone. And so basically shared with the owner, like, we've got to have some information so we can communicate that. He flew up and he says the eighteenth is when they plan to restart it.
The eighteenth of September?
Eight of August.
Oh, of August, okay.
They'll restart.
How much more time?
Well, I mean, I don't know who to talk to. Um the guy that does the actual work believes it's a ten to twelve day project once they start. But they still have some tear off to do, so. I mean, at this point, I've I've met with the owner face to face, really impressed upon like, you know, they have their own weather condition, like has to be above sixty degrees. And I'm trying to explain to him like, you know, you could run into a time here where you're not going to be able to do this and so.
It's in process.
In process. Eighteenth is when they say they're going to start it up again. At this point, we've got to work around. It's work season's there now.
Right.
So.
Okay.
I mean, I feel pretty good about meeting with him. And like I said, I did my best to kind of give him, you know, our situation, what has to be done and the game's going on.
Are there any, are there going to be any limitations once it's installed? Like is there a clearing process? Is there, because
Yeah.
with the fact that football's on the field and soccer, which isn't there, it's over there, but
So we'll have to, in in maintenance of the train, like I talked to um Adam all the time about we're going to try to run water up to that point because once they start, they say it can't get wet. And then we're concerned about killing the grass. And so there's, it's going to be a little delicate balance, but there'll be just tons of communication daily about you know, when we can turn the water off or when do we have to turn the water off for how long? And then they'll, they will kill the, he says the five feet on the inside of the track where they have to lay all the plastic because they'll overspray it.
Okay.
So they'll kill the inside. It's just part of the process, but um.
Okay, well, we did the best that we could do.
Yeah, the best we could. And I I just tell people like this, we got to get this done and we'll mitigate all the inconveniences we can. But it's it's moving forward. The the positive thing is that they actually delivered materials to the parking lot, so.
That's a plus.
Something's going to happen.
Yeah, something's going to happen. There's materials there in the port left, so.
Okay, okay. All right. Any other questions for Matt? Thanks, Andy. Any other questions on the superintendent follow-up?
A little more detail on that light post drop off, Mark?
So we had um a driver of a of a company who was in our parking lot area for some reason. Um it sounds like he backed into our light pole and then drove away. He didn't tell anybody. Um but we had actually had people on the grounds who saw it happen and uh there isn't a police department in Spirit Lake right now, so the mayor got involved and um they were the ones who called us to tell us that we had a light pole down. Uh so then Mike dispatched his people out there. Um Lynn handled the majority of that because I was out of town. Um but we're, uh but they had pictures of the truck that hit it with the damage from hitting the pole. And so the company has not balked at all. Um they're working with their insurance company, so they will pay to have it repaired.
Time frame on that repair?
That's what Michelle just was asking Mike about. And he's um they're still working with their insurance company, so we're waiting to get confirmation. We want to make sure that they're paying for it and we are not.
Correct.
We have pictures and we have video. We have pictures and video.
Yeah, the pictures are part of the superintendent follow-up.
So.
Moving on, are we are we able to move on or do we have more discussion conversation? Okay, let's go on to the financial follow-up. So it looks clarification on the yellow bus information?
Yes.
Um it looks like your recommendation is proceeding with two buses, but then it says three. So I'm a little confused with that.
So we have enough in the bus depreciation fund that cover two buses.
Okay.
Um with a little bit of a kick in from the plant facilities fund, like we discussed at the workshop, we could purchase three. I'm just looking for the pleasure of the board on if we want to go out to bid for two or three.
Okay. Um and we have a two thousand fourteen bus that's out of service?
Um my understanding, I talked to Jessica about that earlier today. My understanding is there were certain buses that even though there were some older, the there are certain ones that have caused us more trouble.
Okay.
And we've had to do more repairs on them than expected. So they chose to decommission those buses versus some of the older buses that are running a little bit more steadily.
Okay. Yeah, you will. I'm just more concerned about this two thousand fourteen because it doesn't look like it's had an abundant amount of mileage.
It was troublesome.
Tacked onto it, but yeah, it's like, that's not good. Okay, um.
So with regard to the yellow buses at facilities workshop, we talked about that, but um Jessica, who just would like formal board action so that we have any minutes as to my board wants us to purchase so she can move forward in the bidding process.
Okay. So possibly we can well, what is the board?
May I have some questions?
Yeah.
I noticed that we've had a couple of buses here on the bus on a hundred thousand miles, albeit they're a little bit old. Yeah, I've been decommissioned. I I do you have any information on that?
I'd have to defer to Jessica. Like I said, the information that I had from her was there were certain buses that had constantly been in the shop. Um I can ask specific bus numbers and get more information for you if you'd like.
Okay, but one with fifty seven thousand miles on it should work for us.
Well, if you notice the miles traveled in the district, it's only three.
Yeah, there were a couple buses that were decommissioned earlier in the year. They just showed up on the report because they did have mileage for the twenty-two, twenty-three year.
Okay.
So the mileage that you see there, um you'll see the beginning and ending of all of them, but you also see the miles that they traveled that year. And so um for the most part, they weren't being utilized because of the issues that they had.
Well, it would be great to get a report from Jessica to kind of have a better understanding on the decommissioned buses, uh like why? Because to Bob's point, when you have a bus that's twenty-two years old, uh but it's only got fifty-seven thousand miles on it,
Yep.
where's the problem?
Okay, I understand completely.
Okay, okay. Any other questions or clarifiers on the buses? Okay. Thank you for the um layout of the electrical and plumbing and HVAC and septic. Um based on these numbers, especially for the fiscal year of twenty-three, it would seem prudent, and I think Mike needs to weigh in on this. But the amount expensed for an electrician and the amount expensed for a plumber, it may be more cost effective to hire, to have staffed an electrician and a plumber. I don't know what the other thoughts are. Um HVAC, septic, lawn. Although I don't know, lawn services might be able to do that. But what are your guys' thoughts?
Well, what you run into if you're if you're, if you contract out electrical work or plumbing work, for example, and you get a bill for it, that includes labor and parts and materials. Unless you separate out parts and materials, you can't tell exactly what you're paying for labor costs. And that's the part that would make a difference in housework.
Just to you, Jones. I did my best to pull parts out um when I was running this report. Um it's easier for the plumbing to pull the parts out than it is the electrician, but I did my best to only pull in the labor costs for those projects. It's not perfect. I can't guarantee that it's exactly perfect, but we did our best to pull um the the parts out because that's not part of the true cost of the labor.
Thank you. Okay, so these are labor uh approximated labor expenses that we made for the district to utilize electrician and plumbing, HVAC, septic and lawn. Because the disadvantage is when we have issues and then we have to play the waiting game with not getting things serviced, not getting uh plumbing addressed. Et cetera.
I do think for the positions that you're looking at, um the rate for those positions will be a premium and when you I do think for the positions that you're looking at, um, the rate for those positions will be a premium and when you factor in benefits. It may not be cost effective to hire those, I know Mike probably doesn't like my stance on that. But we would have to pay a competitive rate to have an electrician want to come work solely for the district.
Okay.
And electricians have a good rate that they charge.
True.
So, um, I'm not advocating one way or the other, but when you factor that in, um, they're.
It's a consideration.
It's a consideration.
Correct, I agree.
And maybe a consideration for after we have the budget talk that CFO.
I do understand that. Um, I am curious, flipping over now to the officials expenditures, thank you by the way for getting that, why there was such a significant increase in Lakeland official pay for last year?
Um, that is something that we're looking into as well, how we pulled that information for you, it's not just officials, you have gatekeepers, scorebooks and stuff like that in there, um, so myself and Chelsea just didn't quite have enough time to get a good grasp on that variance, but wanted to get you the information for the, the numbers.
Right, and I absolutely appreciate that, but just in comparing with the twenty-one and the twenty-two year, they're, they're not neck and neck, but they're not so. And this was like, whoa, we, what happened, so.
It was when I ran it and it was, we just did this a couple days ago, Brandon gave it to Jessica, I'm like, this is not.
We gotta figure out what's going on here, so.
Okay.
It was definitely something, uh, pretty high up on our list to figure out.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then.
Do you love the food service report?
No, I do not, not one iota.
Um, so that's how the information is provided to our food service director, Kevin. It helps him in his reports, um, so we wanted to show you what we currently have and ask what you would like to see so that we could build something that is more user friendly for the board.
Well.
That's very pretty.
I just wanna know what's the income, what's the expenses and.
It's low.
You want income expense and fund balance?
Yeah.
Do you need it by site or is it okay to do the program as a whole?
I don't think, I would say let's start with it as a whole.
Okay.
And then if we feel that there needs to be more detail, we can build on that.
Okay, not a problem.
Anybody else have input on that? Really?
So we will start including that.
Okay.
In that format.
Yeah, because this is very interesting, it's like, thanks, but.
We'll just give it as is.
No, and I appreciate that.
I've made some input on what you were looking for and that's, I have done that, so I just thought I'd hand it off to you.
I appreciate that. So, um, do we wanna have a little discussion on the yellow bus information? If y'all wanna, you can have a seat and we'll, so you don't have to stand in there. So the recommendation is, uh, to proceed with two, but then if we add in approximately twenty-five thousand, we can purchase, don't believe me. I know, go ahead.
Did we have that coming back, Brad, on the, I've shown these last?
Yes.
We did.
Now, I, I don't mind going through the three, but I do think we need some feedback from Jessica on what's happening on those buses, it's a very strange one.
I've got it over to my follow-up.
And it looks like this past year, we, we introduced six new buses, which I don't recall us authorizing six purchases.
Have we got any of them?
Well, yeah, they're on the list.
Always late.
But I know they were trickling in and that was why we were like, wait a minute, more buses, I mean.
I think we did regular buses and then we did special ed buses.
Yes. You were correct, I do recall that. So I guess then, out of these three buses, we need to determine if they're regular buses, if we need special needs buses. And I, I know I read somewhere on the, the passenger vans, there was comment in here somewhere.
There's, I had something on my superintendent.
Was it, okay, that's where it was.
Working on the, the bid language, however, one of.
Thought we'd already gone out.
We did, remember, but they're not gonna, it's gonna be a, a year and a half to two more years. And so we talked about, um, putting, going out to bid for used.
Okay.
And to see if we actually could get our hands on things, however, one of the things we just learned is that former CFO did not actually budget those dollars anywhere.
What?
It's part of what we need to talk about, so this, so this whole bus conversation might be better had after we have.
The budget conversation, okay.
I would recommend that we wait.
Okay.
So when we have the conversation, we'll bring all of the history forward because we already proved it and said, yep, it's gonna come from here and go there, so we will have all of that. Okay.
That's what Jessica's been, uh, working on, trying to rub her head around where things are or are not.
Okay. So are we good with not making a determination on the yellow buses at this time? Any comment, Bob? Okay. Excuse me?
I'm just wondering.
I wander a lot too. So Jessica, are you okay with, I mean, you don't have a choice, but are you okay with waiting on the yellow bus?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like, so I'd recommend that after we have the budget conversation and decide what to do, that we make a decision in September if possible.
Okay.
Um, just because it does take time to get, as we all know.
Yes, we do.
To get delivered product.
Correct.
So the sooner the better.
Gotcha, okay, that sounds like a plan. Any other questions on the financial follow-up, information we were provided with? Okay, moving on to the Alex curriculum, it is an action item.
So I have a question, I thought we were only using this at, um, Mountain View. So they've been using it throughout the whole district without board approval, did they?
No, we, um, piloted, piloted it last year, um, at Lakeland, uh, High School and Timberlake Middle as part of the adoption process for the algebra geometry, Algebra One.
So were you aware of that?
So when we brought, uh, the adoption forward, we included that and there was some concern, so.
I remember that, I didn't remember the whole pilot discussion though, and then she came out and said that we've been using it, I'm like, where are we using it?
Okay, yep, I thought we had approved it for Mountain View only.
Right, yeah.
But it was, it might have been board approved for Mountain View, but then, um, uh, we did the permission to pilot it as part of the high school math adoption.
I used all, I don't have all that, right.
Well, it was part of the, it was just part of the whole math, um, adoption process where they, they had limited access to the.
Is there a reason why teachers can't give assessments, why do we have to utilize these AI programs for the assessments?
We can certainly, I mean, they give assessments, teachers give assessments, it's part of the program. Um, what this, this does, um, is it gives a diagnostic test, which we can give, um, identifies where discrepancies are and where there are skill gaps, but then it, uh, what it does very efficiently, I guess, is put, it provides kids with an individualized learning path, so if you're struggling with a particular concept, you get, you, there's a tutorial you get to watch, you get to practice, you take an assessment, you demonstrate that you are able to do it and then you move on. In the high school setting especially, there's so much, um, content that they're delivering that they, they don't necessarily have in there, they need time to pull small groups back to do individual, um, teaching to fill in some of the skill gaps, and so this is just one more avenue to provide opportunities for kids to remedy some of the gaps that they have.
Yeah, well, they must be getting a lot of feedback because they completely redid the Alex website in between, I wasn't at last month's board meeting, it sounds like I missed a whole lot. But the month before, when I looked it up on the website, their website now is completely different, so I had to go pull, um, archive of their website and I finally gave up because they talk a lot of marketing language, so I went and pulled the patent and I read the patent of their, uh, machine learning, um, and what they're doing and then I also read all of the student review and feedback on the various websites. And there was maybe one or two students out of multiple pages and I didn't save them all, my machine crashed at the time and I lost everything, but anyways. The students do not like it, one of the main complaints were that it is timed, so say they have ten minutes to answer something, well, the student has to stop and they're trying to figure it out and when the, when the program detects that there's no more interaction, it automatically moves on and then it gives them, the whole thing that they're measuring with the machine learning is all of the behavior or negative behavioral analysis, to the point to where when it's building, number one, it doesn't have a trained database. Our students are the guinea pig to create the training database with semi and professional input, which I don't know who that or what that is because it's never identified either in the patent or their website or any of their literature. Um, and if we're calling the teacher the semi or professional that's intervening with the software, I don't see that we have that skill set. But it's building a negative learning behavioral analysis based upon its, it's just a contextual language, so it's only as good as the language that the programmer gave it and from the programmer's perception of what the thing should be. And there's no reasoning put into it anyways. It's too hard, I don't know how to explain it to everybody.
To those of us who don't know your technology.
But in, in building this database, we'll say, we'll call it, on everything that the child does, so every interaction that the child has with the software is recorded based upon its perception, not based upon what the child's doing, right? And data always only tells us what happened, not what is happening, so it could be saying that the child, and the big thing they're really in, I mean, these people are really into negative, they love negative. And that's all they're looking for is bad, 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 you could read the patent, that's all it talks about, is everything's bad, the kids are cheating, the kids can't keep up, and I'm thinking, well, what if a kid gets to a point to where like they're really good at that piece and they zoom through it, it will automatically ding them as cheating and it will register that, and now this all becomes part of, you know, what's gonna follow them, it's building a complete behavioral analysis of this child's behavior with math input. I, I think it's, I know everybody's probably gonna think I'm crazy, whatever, y'all can do whatever you wanna do, but I, I would never, ever put anybody in front of this, there's no way, there, here's the other thing, at no time in the patent or anywhere else does it tell me how they're anonymizing the data. If the data is completely appointed to this child, at no time does it say it's anonymized, not only that, but they're taking the data set for one child and using it as a training data set for another child until the whole thing becomes, basically they would end up using the students as guinea pigs so that it can learn and train itself so that what you're helping them do is make their software better, in which, so now we've just made all of our students become the monetization of their software company. So we just gave them our students' input, built their software company for them to take our students' data and make more money. Data is worth more than oil nowadays, data is everything, data is what people make money off of and this, after reading the patent, there's just no way I would do that, I absolutely, I, I can't vote for that, it might look like a great piece of thing and all that, but underneath what it's doing is not what you think it's doing. And they have full control of it, they, they own it, they, I, I mean, when you, you know, when telemetry starts being collected and sent off to where everything the student does from the time, I mean, it measures everything, they, how long it takes them to click a button, how long does it take them to log in, how long does it take them to log out? How long did it take them to do, so there, when you have that kind of data, you can build, and I know this is probably, people are gonna think I have a whack job, but you can build a full psychological profile off of somebody with just that data. And they do it all the time, that's how software is written nowadays. I just think it's dangerous, I think you're messing with what we don't understand. Go back to a piece of paper and a pencil. It's just, I, I, I can't in good conscience. And you go read the patent yourself, I mean, it's in there, you know, don't take my word for it. So anyways, but I appreciate everybody waiting for me for, because I couldn't make it last month, so I do appreciate that you waited until I could be here to share what you guys. So thank you for that.
So we've been using it at Mountain View.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they have, I don't think they used it last year. It was approved, then we use it at Mountain View and then we have a new teacher and I don't know.
So the only experience we have with it is.
Timberlake Middle and, and Lakeland High School used it with some of their algebra kids.
I, I guess it might be, if we're really seriously considering it, it might be helpful to hear from a teacher who is utilizing it, you know, how it worked and how kids responded to it.
So one of, one of the things we're trying to, one of the things we're trying to do is when you look statewide at the math ISAT scores as a state, they're visible, and we're less than fifty percent proficient in grade six through twelve for math. And that's as a state, which in my mind means there's something going on with the test. Because when you look at our kids' math scores and their grades in their classrooms, we don't have fewer than fifty percent of our kids passing our math classes. So the intention behind the program was to try to identify, at the elementary level, we, we have these programs that allow teachers to monitor growth over time and we don't have that at the middle school and high school. Once you get into algebra, I guess, at the middle school, and so what we're looking for is a way to try to track their growth over time so that we can start to try to shift, uh, our math scores and, and try to figure out what it is about this test that is, that our kids are struggling so much with, it's not just our kids, it's everybody across the state, but so that's the intent behind the tool.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
A way to monitor that.
Yeah, and it looks, you know, from the face, from the surface, I mean, it looks, you know, just like happy and good and all that, but some things you can't see. Um, I do know that some of the other schools have been, um, or at least some of the other teachers in other districts have been utilizing, I guess the, the state, um, I can't remember what it was called, but the state has some kind of like, uh,
They had like.
Practice tests or something like that.
We use those, the interim tests.
Uh, yeah, whatever, but I know that, um, some of the teachers that had used them before, their, uh, in fact, they their students' test scores or whatever did come up. And I think, you know, yeah, we probably definitely, I mean, I see the need for a tool, that's for sure, you know, um.
Maybe we should see what STEM charter.
Maybe we should see what Stan Charter is doing. They're like 90%. Just walk over there and say.
Well, I have, I have a good idea for it.
Yeah.
And it's not anything we can do.
What?
Because we take all of our kids.
Right.
They know.
And do you think even putting in actual, do you think that actual implementation of curriculum is going to help with that or?
We'll probably see a little bit of a dip anytime you implement a new curriculum. You see an implementation dip as people are trying to get used to. At the high school level, it shouldn't be, we really shouldn't see a dip because they stayed with the same publisher. They just updated. So we'll see. I don't know. We we just are, the whole state is struggling with that test. It's got to be the way that the questions are asked. Or the techno, the way the technology works in the test that's different than what the kids are used to doing. So, but we've never been, as a district, we've never been 50% proficient. We've just always had such high test scores and we're, this one is challenging. And the teachers are not supposed to be looking at the test. So it's, it's hard to know how the kids are being asked questions and how different that is from how we're. In theory, if the standards are are easily interpreted, which they're not, and we have a curriculum that's aligned to those easily interpreted standards and we're teaching to the standards, it shouldn't matter what test we put in front of kids. They should be able to to show us that they can use the FOIL method to factor a quadratic formula. But there's something about the way that this test is presented to kids that is throwing off the entire state and it has since the first day.
Now, you say that teachers aren't supposed to look at the tests where it weighs the state. State doesn't want, ask them not to, or is it strictly written that they cannot?
Well, they've loosened the language a little bit. I've complained loudly for every year that I've been in this office. Because if we had a teacher who never looked at a test and just taught a textbook and then gave a test and the kids all failed, I would have a problem with the teacher. We would be having a conversation because you should know what your assessment looks like so you know you're preparing your kids. And it's, it took years for the state to loosen that. But initially, the teachers had to sign a confidentiality agreement that said that they would not look at the test. So the kids would be sitting in the classroom with their computer screens up and the teacher had to be on this side of the screen.
I wasn't sure how strict that was. I I have heard that, but I wasn't sure how strict that was.
They've loosened it up a little bit and now teachers are allowed to walk around the room, but they can't take any notes. They obviously can't take pictures or anything. And they're not supposed to stand over students' shoulder and read the questions. They're just supposed to kind of be monitoring that kids are actually putting forth effort. We're not supposed to be there around the house.
Right, yeah. So before the test and the teachers get nothing. They don't even say, you know, here are the principles we're gonna hit, even from a very broad, high level, you know, maybe not detailed.
Just for a second, so there are two versions of blueprints that come with ISATs. And at the last few years, they've vacillated between, we're gonna do the long version, we're gonna do the short version. Remember, the standards just changed in 2020 or 2019. And they have openly said they, our current new standards do not match what's on the ISAT. We got an email this summer saying we're going back to the long version. We have the short version. So until that process is super clean, they'll give you kind of domains. These are the things that are gonna cover. These are the things that want you to go over. But it's not necessarily, they may weight it differently, the the questions. I mean, people will say that says that they're gonna do a ton of fraction problems and then kids will get five fraction problems and then, you know, 30 of something else. Right, because it's an adaptive test, so it changes. And so we try to, the blueprints are in our handbook. We try to go over that. We will look strategically, like these are the things you need to make sure that the kids know, not because we're teaching to the test, because those are core concepts that are going to, like when you're in seventh grade, you need to understand them for eighth grade, so that vertical alignment piece. The goal is to Lisa's point is you, if our kids know it inside and out, they should be able to, whatever, whatever test is given, if it's not a gotcha moment, they should be able to perform. But it, across the state, I will say, across the state, so Lakeland is not any different. People feel like the target's constantly moving. And so we have a short version, we have a long version. The standards don't match. And so it feels very inconsistent. Again, we don't scrutinize the test. We don't get to see the test questions. We're not walking around taking pictures. We're not itemizing that. So I can't tell you if what that blueprint says, if it says 85% of it's gonna be this and it actually matches one, what the standards say, because ultimately, that's the guide. And two, then what the blueprints say that it's going to that percentage. And so you can talk to 100 teachers and they will all tell you they feel like it's a disconnect. Whether that's true or not, I don't know because we don't get to, we don't do that. I mean, we try to be uber ethical about that. But and we just got a thing saying they're going back to the long version. That's the other factor is there is a huge misconception about the time constraint that it takes. So that's why the short version kind of came out because it was long and then during COVID and they're bad. And so they initially used to say, oh, it's gonna take a couple of hours.
90 minutes.
The short version, you're right, it absolutely does one section of that test. The longer version, I mean, kids used to be in there for hours on it. And so that's the other piece is it's not, at some point, it's no longer testing cognition of the, or accuracy of the standards or your acquisition of the standards. Now it's just can you persevere through the time constraint? And we have kids that will break it up, will do 30 minutes every day for six weeks because they cannot persevere and at some point, I'm just gonna click. So, I mean, it's not, it's just not that black and white.
Yeah, the other thing I heard from different teachers was that, you know, they're just going along, following their curriculum or whatever they're using. And then they hear from the students, oh, we had such and such on the test. Like they haven't even got to that concept yet.
Right.
You know, it's like they didn't know.
So in our instructional maps, we try to strategically look at that. Whatever they're saying is weighted, that you've taught all of those concepts. Again, we have no idea what the questions are going to look like. But if it says that we're gonna cover fractions, we've covered fractions. It's gonna, you know, do some algebra concepts. We've covered those pieces so that we're not putting kids in front of the test for hours where they, it's not fair. They have no chance of being successful because the concepts haven't been taught. We try to be really strategic with that. But again, people feel like the target moves, so it is hard, you know?
The other part that's hard for North Idaho schools is the ISAT window opens the week before our spring break. So literally, our kids have three quarters of a year of instruction before they have to take those tests where the kids in Southern Idaho are three to four weeks more.
And we had four weeks after ISAT was over the window closed where we still had school. I mean, that happens often. So I mean, there's, again, we need to, we definitely recognize math as an area that we need to improve upon. And we're giving you variables, but the reality is, is that something that, you know, it's our focus? And we, we're hoping that our new program will continue to, we're gonna see that jump. We're starting to see the teachers who have been using it. We're consistently getting better scores. We're consistently, the kids are being able to keep it. The retention of those skills from grade to grade, that vertical alignment, we're definitely seeing an increase there. It doesn't happen overnight. So, you know, and, you know, we have, we have kids coming from other districts that are two to three grade levels below. And so we're addressing that every year, to Lisa's point. I mean, we do have new kids coming in and, you know, they were here for K1 and 2 and now they're coming in third grade. And so part of some of those adaptive AI assessments, when it's a diagnostic measure, it's going where it would be really hard from just a standard, standardized assessment to come in and I'm a fifth grader and to be able to have concepts that go all the way down to the fundamental level, the second grade. That's why those diagnostic measures are helpful because it will go that low so we know where is the hole so we can plug it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And it's not readily available in a paper copy. Otherwise, you're assessing a lot of things. It's a, it's a longer test. And that's what we're trying to avoid because it's not as easy as within that grade span, the hole is there. It can be several grade levels below. So trying to find that when you're talking about potentially 35 standards at one grade level.
Right, yeah, if that's all they were doing was just serving up the question, getting wrong or right. If they get an if then, then this, but that's not what they're doing.
It's not exactly, right. So it's trying to find that, that still allows teachers at those higher grade levels to get down to a fundamental level at the core of the problem. You know, where is the deficit in a siloed version so we can address it and then move on? What's the stumbling block? Is it reading? Is it truly some conceptual piece of math? I use the example of fractions, like can I, do I not know how to reduce? Do I not know how to find lowest common multiple? Or I truly can't multiply? Where am I struggling? Because it could just be one little part, but the whole problem's wrong because it's not one little part.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah, you can't find slope intercept if you can't add, subtract integers.
I was simple with fractions. She has to go.
So if it's not Alex, it would be nice to have a tool. But I think we run into the same issue with any tool that we're using where there is some form of that artificial intelligence. There's an algorithm that's built in.
Well, the algorithm would be fine.
So what's the difference?
But machine learning is a neural network. Your brain is a neural network, right? So except that a computer can learn at exponential pace, right? So it's literally a brain. That's what people don't understand. It's, it's not just AI or AGI or whatever. It's a neural network. You are training a brain that functions off of synaxis, so to speak. And your data is creating this artificial intelligence. You are building the artificial intelligence. It's a, it's a brain. It's a neural network. That's literally what it is in machine learning that it, that it's doing. It's not just a simple if then else statement that's happening.
So that would be the algorithm that we're talking about.
Right, yeah, that would be just a simple, yeah. But that's not what this is doing. This is learning. This is gathering data to learn about kids and things. And and then from that data that it gathers, it's almost like an observation but with more input, just like if you observed somebody after, you know, sort of. But yeah, you're feeding it, you know, human information. Thing is, it has no reasoning capability, you know? That's not how it deduces things. That's not how it decides. But that's just my, my synopsis. That's my, uh, after reading.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Further discussion on the Alex program?
Once again, I, you know, I appreciate. I appreciate, you know, the information we've been providing and I trust that information. But it does make you curious about what the teacher who's actually using it has in the way of feedback. Is there any time sensitive about this?
No, I mean, at some point, we need, I mean, I don't know what, if this, if it's not this, I don't know what we would bring, so, but we'll start looking, so.
Well, I, you know, and I appreciate the amount of time and energy you put into researching this thing. But I also understand the fact that you can be really searching for something that will help as a tool. Obviously, the state is not providing you any pre-test or preliminary test or that sort of thing.
Well, they have what they call the interim assessment block for ISATs. But in my conversation with Carlin Lareway, who was in charge of assessment at the State Department a few years ago, she did finally say, because I just kept saying, we're using these and we're not seeing any benefit to the, to them. In fact, kids go in super frustrated because they feel like I did really well in the interim assessment block. So this test shouldn't be so hard. And then they come out in tears. And she did finally admit that the interim assessment block are all what they call depth of knowledge one questions. So basic computation, what the kids are seeing on the test are depth of knowledge three and four.
So it's not a true cross factor.
Right. I mean, it helps with learning how to do some of the technology things, the click and drag and some of the tools that they have to be able to access on the test. But it doesn't give a true indication of how they're gonna do mathematically on the, on the assessor.
Well, you know, you gotta do what you gotta do sometimes. You know, maybe, maybe this is it. On the other level, I've heard you say you don't, you've been after people at the state level. We knew they have a new supervisor tenant. I don't know if we have a new math consultant in the department or not. Don't guess?
We do, yeah. And they are going, we are, in the next year or two, we will have a new test. Our contract actually with DRC is up, the five-year contract. They chose to go to stay with it one more year because they wanted some longitudinal data and COVID kind of messed up the middle of their data. So we've got new standards, old test, and.
Do the powers that be understand the mess this is? Do you think, do the state superintendent understand what, what people are trying to deal with with this kind of nonsense?
I'm not sure that she's heard, because she's brand new, from the superintendent, superintendents to the level that Sherry Ybarra and her team have heard just because they've been in there for, you know, eight years. But I'm, I will continue to have that conversation and push to have a test that actually assesses what.
You know, and if there's something that we can do to support that effort, I, you know, at least from my standpoint, I would want to do that because my experience is things don't change unless you push the right buttons.
Yep. And the state is really watching the middle school math because the middle school math scores are even lower than the high school math scores. So they know it's a problem, but I will, I will continue to reach out to Debbie. I actually, prior to COVID, had talked to Carlin and to, she was bringing down in the summer of 2020, math people, Brian Cluss was going to be our representative down there. And they were going to read every single question on the math test to determine whether it was appropriate for high school. And then COVID hit and so they obviously didn't get to go. And then she left the department and we had to start from scratch and start having the same conversations all over again.
So what is available on their portal here? What are these practice tests that they're talking about here on the State Department education?
They're, they're like 10 to 15 question tests, but they, what, they use questions that were thrown out from the test bank.
That's smart. We're not gonna use these, so there you go.
Yeah, and I, I can tell you at Lakeland High School, Jimmy really targeted math. And they did all kinds of math test prep leading up to the ISATs. And not just in math. He had the entire staff involved in, in providing opportunities to incorporate math into other things. And they saw very little movement on the test. We anticipated actually bigger movement because we tested juniors this year instead of sophomores. So we thought one more year of math might, might help. But then they also bumped up the score proficiency. So they had, they were very intentional, like the high school still didn't even want it to be.
Well, it is an action item, so our options are to take action on it or to table it.
Well, I would favor tabling it with some direct, pending some direct feedback. Our personnel who have been using it have experience with it.
Last board meeting, it was said that there was only one teacher at Lakeland that had used it.
Katie Standish.
Right. I didn't realize that there was more up at Timberlake, so.
Yeah, Keith Newburger.
Okay, so there's two teachers that have utilized it. Do we know how many periods they utilized it for?
Katie used it with her, her algebra concepts classes. So her kids, her MTSS math classes. So that's two or three periods. And I'm not sure how many Keith used it with. Do you have that information?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So we have a period of the day where students, it's like a homeroom period, their war period, and so once a week, they spend time in their learning pathway, and our advanced students who tested out of the iReady learning path were utilizing Alex at that time. So it was probably less than 10 kids used it once a week for an hour.
Okay. How do they log into the software? What does their username and access code look like?
I think it's through Clever.
So we have a single sign-on?
Okay.
That's even worse.
Okay, so is it the same 10 students or is it for the whole year or the whole?
Same students.
Okay, so just 10 kids up at Timberlake utilized it?
Yeah, so basically just our students who test out of the ability of iReady. So then they were essentially taking pre-algebra and then learning algebra through Alex.
Okay.
Yeah, during a separate period. And then the intention for this next year, if it was, if it, you know, went through the adoption process, was to use it then to bridge that gap up to the high school because I know that Mr. LaFontaine uses iReady still with our last year he used that with our algebra concept students. And so he kind of was running into the same problem where kids would start to test out, and so they finished the program. It just turns kind of into a management issue, and so we talked about now we would have that data where you could bridge the gap more easily between middle school and high school.
Okay. So about how many kids are in those two classes or three classes, if you estimate?
Probably 14 kids.
Total?
So do our students use single sign-on for everything they touch in the district? Wow.
So you want to follow up on those? Those two?
But, you know, that's my suggestion. I, you know, go with where the board wants you to go with it.
Okay, well, someone needs to bring forth a motion on the Alex. Either it's tabled or there's a motion, so.
I would like to take it until the next pre-year board meeting, pending some additional input from staff.
Is there a second?
One second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Um, those opposed? Nay. Have a tie.
So there's a motion, aye?
Yes, I believe so, doesn't it?
Yes. Oh, there must be a tiebreaker, but we don't have that written down. Oh, no, we don't.
I would, I would, um, if I may amend the motion, false motion?
Okay.
Um, just, I'd find with the table it if it comes back with options, other options, what are other districts using around us and so we can get the input from those using it in the district and then what are
What are maybe some other options?
Yeah, what are some other options that we can get this gaps analysis? Whatever else we're using it for.
So the motion's been amended?
It's a new motion.
Yeah, we have a new motion. Which, do you need to know what the new motion is?
So we table, we'll table it in the next meeting and it'll come back with options and feedback.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Um, did we have a second on that?
No.
But I will.
Well, except for the fact, and we still voted, and it's still. Okay. The administrative system analysis job description.
So this is some assistance for the tech department, especially with IC. I'm okay with the board taking action on the job description, but this is one of those pieces that we need to discuss when we talk about budget, and I don't know that I would move forward with this position this time. I don't have a problem with approval of the job description for later use, but I don't anticipate posting this position.
I think it was, it was noted that this person would land on column F, is that?
For the last column, yes.
Okay.
I think it's their desire to have somebody with a bachelor's degree in technology.
I see that. I'm still struggling with the fact that, you know, we said we weren't going to add anymore, but now we've created a new position to add when that wasn't the main plan. But I do hear what you're saying, that we're not adding ready this month. I just want to approve the job description. Any input or comment on this job description? Any comment, Bob?
No, I have nothing.
Right, then I'll entertain a motion on the administrative system analysis job description.
Move to approve.
One second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have the curriculum, the supplemental resources. Question. Dr. Paslin. We got on this a video and a book, and then people were questioning why.
They just did that so you could see the book, so more information.
I'd hope that's what it was.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. So they're looking to purchase these books?
Right.
Okay. MindTap? Seems to be concerns about it, use, its use. What are we using it for? Because MindTap you can use for a varying number of courses. But it's just a program we want access to?
Mm-hmm, it's for Lakeland High School.
Right.
It's for her own, for her own, uh, for the non-criminal classes, it's for finances and
Okay. But it's, because it's so vast, if it's approved, it can be utilized for anything that MindTap is for, even though we don't know what we're utilizing it for?
I can never kind of narrow it down a little bit more about what specifically we want to use it for.
Okay.
We talked about for the September one, this had already been sent out, we but that we would try to get more of a description if it was on website with some more detail, so it's a little bit more funneled.
Okay.
But I, this one already gone to parents, and so I didn't change it.
Okay.
So, but for the September one, I'm going to ask them to provide more notes.
Okay.
We talked about that at the last meeting.
So that one will come back with more information?
Mm-hmm, I can get more.
Okay. Any other comments or input on the curriculum?
Um, on the MindTap, yeah, it'd be nice to know if they're actually using the curriculum part of it, or are they just using it for learning management or?
My understanding is just the curriculum part of it, but I can ask for more details specifically.
Okay. Any further input? Okay. Would someone like to bring a motion forward on curriculum if there's no more conversation or discussion?
I have to approve everything except MindTap, until we get more than three, more information.
Okay. One second. What was that?
Oh, it's about second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we have the fall athletic schedules. Thank you to the athletic instructors for bringing them forward before the sports actually started.
Barely.
Love it.
Practices.
We are making progress. That is awesome. Any comments, questions, or concerns on the schedules? That being said, I'll entertain a motion on the fall athletic schedules.
Move to approve the fall athletic schedules as submitted.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, we have the updated trustee zone map.
It's not pretty, and we're working on making it pretty. So we don't have the capacity in the district to create a map with a lot of detail. We tried working with the city of Rafteron because they do have map making abilities, and Jessica shared with them all of our GIS overlays, but that's what it looks like when it is done. So we're, we're working with engineers to actually print our maps, but because we have three trustee zones that are up for reelection this year, we have to assign that land swap area to trustee zones, so people in those zones can work.
Okay.
So that's the intent.
The boundary adjustment was only in relation to the land swap. So it just impacted those two zones and then the overall outline of the district.
Okay.
So wasn't this part of what we should have gotten when we did all this with
Cordelain?
Uh, no, the mapping, when we did all of this with
I think the, are you talking about?
Idaho School Board Association, but it was edge of area, Karen.
This, this happened. So this is, this land swap was finalized after we got those maps from ISBA.
I thought they were going to, so could we get in touch with those?
I'm in the process of that.
Oh, okay.
At the moment.
Okay.
I just needed something to get to you this evening
Oh, okay.
because we have a very firm deadline to get this to the county clerk for the upcoming elections.
Yeah, okay.
So we're working on getting maps that are more easily read.
So you need us to approve these lovely layouts?
Yes.
Okay.
They are legally accurate, the description, they do follow the legal description that was presented with the land swap. Cordelain just had theirs done. We just missed the step of getting these over to county elections. We did all the other steps. Cordelain did all the other steps. We both just missed getting the new maps to the county election office.
Okay.
Nothing's changed. It's just going to be new maps.
I hear you.
Okay, well, I mean, that's what it is, I guess, for now.
Yeah.
So is part of the land swap area going to zone four and part of it to zone three?
Uh, we're taking away from one and adding to the other.
Do you have anything that shows the comparison of what it is now and what the new is?
That was part of the packet. So the new map is the very pretty map, and then the part that's being swapped. I don't have them side by side for you.
It'd be nice to see that. Doesn't make any difference. It would just be nice to see it.
There is one that has a lot of red marking on it. That's the, the one that's being, that was a part of the initial packet for the land swap that was approved back last December. The one that doesn't have the red marking is the new one. I just don't have them, like I said, side by side. So it's that little chunk by Giovanni.
Giovanni Estates.
Yep, Giovanni Estates, that has been given to Cordelain School District, and then we inherited, or we annexed the piece over off of Lancaster. That is not part of that trustee zone.
So the part that we
Well, there was a
got the land swap is going into zone three?
Yes. And then the part that is, was being removed is being removed from zone four.
Yes.
Zone four.
Correct.
Yeah, this kind of came to light when we ran the March levy election and Giovanni Estates voted for Lakeland's levy elec- in Lakeland's a levy election instead of Cordelain's levy election, and then in May, when we both reran our levies, they were voting in Cordelain's. And so we got phone calls from people in Giovanni Estates saying, "How come we're vote, have to vote for Cordelain or in Lakeland?" So that's when we realized there was a step that was missed.
And then her state statue, we wouldn't be able to look at rezoning, I believe, until 2026, because we can do it once per five years. And the last one was done, it was supposed to be done in 2020, it was done in 2012, when the state did that whole project, which is what resulted in the maps we currently have.
Now, the rezoning happened in 2022?
Finalized in 2022, it started in 2021.
I think it started with the census, because that's how we lose, and then we got these lovely non-straight lines.
Yes.
But it was finalized in 2022, so would it be from the finalization that we're doing?
I'll double check it.
Because I thought it was every 10.
I'll double check that, and her state statue, we can go back every five.
Okay.
I listed that in the resolution.
Oh, perfect.
Under documentation.
Okay, that would be good. So, that being said, uh
Move to approve.
Thank you, Jessica.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to course proposals. We have four course proposals. That's like Skills for Learning, Myth Busting 101, and Modern Culture and Entertainment. I don't know if it's just me, but the hyperlinks on these documents did not work.
Yeah, they don't work on my end.
So, I'm just throwing that out there.
It was like they were scanned or something.
What's on the That's Live, it says the curriculum, I think, is in GPF?
It's Financial Literacy.
Oh, okay. Okay. So where was that on the curriculum thing?
So these all came to me. So some of the stuff that they want to use, not particularly this one, but some of the other courses, they're doing some videos, so they have enough to start. When I got the list, we had already sent out the August for parents in the community, so all of this is labeled for the September. If there's anything additionally that they want to use
Okay.
for the September board meeting, and I have it listed under, here's the course, here's the course proposal, and then here's the additional supplemental curriculum they want to use. They all have some curriculum that they're going to use that already has been approved. We've approved some other financial literacy programs or different aspects of that, and there's some videos they want to show for the introductory, but I didn't get the curriculum in time to send it out, and I have to send it out like two weeks before, actually three weeks before the board meeting, so because I give you guys a week and then the supplemental curriculum team has two weeks, so it just, they came right after that, and I don't ever add anything to the list once it's been submitted. So I just missed that it didn't coincide because they didn't get it to me.
So it looks like the Myth Busting 101 and the Skills for Learning don't have curriculum. At least it's not identified on the course proposal what curriculum they're using, however.
They're using our, so the Mythbusters, I can tell you, they're using our current science program. They're using some of the kids that we just purchased. They're using our, so the Mythbusters, I can tell you, they're using our current science program. They're using some of the kids that we just purchased.
Okay.
Um, so she's not doing anything in addition to my knowledge.
Okay.
Again, as she gets started, she may add some more things and then it'll come before you. But, um, I'm just labeling, if it falls under these courses, then in the supplemental curriculum, it says that this is the course that you, that was approved and this is where it's falling, so that you understand where it's going.
Okay, no, I hear that. But I know in the past, when we get course proposals, the, the text or the curriculum that's being utilized is identified on there?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Skills for Learning doesn't identify any curriculum. However, there's a bunch of hyperlinks under the units that don't work. So I'm assuming that's the curriculum that they want to use? Okay.
So I think those are scanned and just that's why.
Okay.
What, talking about the first grade level. It says middle school, but what grade level?
Six, seven.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Myth Busting doesn't offer a grade level. Um, That's Life is...
Well, they're, and they're elective, so I think it could be six, seventh, and eighth grade.
Okay.
So for Mythbusters, she does have like four.
I think just set up an eighth grade. I don't think six, twos participate in the elective rotation.
So at the September one, there are a few links for Mythbusters that they'd like approval on. Um, for the modern culture, there's a few articles that they would like to get permission on. Again, they have other resources they're already using that have been approved. These are just additional resources they would like. And then the That's Life, they would like the foundations and personal finance to be approved.
But we haven't seen that yet.
Right, it'll come in September. I just, the timeline doesn't, they got these to me a few weeks ago, but I have to send it out three weeks before, so... And I try not to add to that list.
Not worth it.
Once it's been submitted, so...
No, I appreciate the consistency. Um...
And in September, it's really clear, like I have the course that says it's That's Life and then the curriculum underneath it, so that you know they're attached and connected.
Right. The modern culture, um, and entertainment, those links did work. So I do appreciate that. I'm not really sure what happened on the other ones.
They all worked for me, but then they sent, um, you some too. Did they work for you? I, I screwed up, you guys. I'm sorry.
Oh.
It was, it was a knee problem. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's the way it's supposed to be presented together, so I will definitely make sure that doesn't happen again. I'm sorry.
No worries. No worries.
I think we tried to check those, so...
The other finance courses that we approved, but those were at the high school level. They weren't approved.
We approved one at the, uh, uh, we approved one for middle school that's geared towards middle school and we approved one for the high school. I can't tell you what they were off the top of my head, but I know we did one for Mountain View, um, for Cory, and then we did one at the high school. I want to say it's Lakeland High School. So...
I know we did one at Lakeland. And then I think we also had one brought from Timberlake.
Okay, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, but this, these are specifically geared toward middle school. So like this one, there's a lot of how to write a check and, you know, how to start a, and so it, it is a little bit different. Uh, Mountain View is gonna bring one, um, of course proposal of trying to do with some additional information for finance that they want to try to use as well, so, um...
These are in line with the new statute.
The Financial Literacy statute, so that's why they're coming.
Well, the PF is personal finance.
Oh.
And the NG is?
It's the, uh, I, I don't, I can't pull up the file right now. It's in the link that they sent us.
Okay. But the last, the PF is personal finance, that's, okay.
I want to say it's the person's name. It's like, I can't think of his name right now, though.
Right.
Do you want me to just email it to you really quick?
So many of us, it's all right. Did it, it would go back to studies? Were you able to be in there?
No. It was just the other, uh, modern culture and entertainment. Which the, that's not exactly the first.
Right now.
Yeah. What's that?
I'll tell you what it stands for. Next gen personal finance. But it's specific to middle school.
What we, what we have done in the past, when we've had this situation where we've gotten a course proposal but not the curriculum, is the board has approved the course proposal pending approval of the curriculum.
Only caveat is they do have things in there that have been approved that they could use in the interim. It's not, this isn't a standalone. None of them have a standalone program or they're waiting just for the program. This is supplemental to the course. They all have additional approved things they could use. So they just certainly have approval of the course.
Okay.
So we don't have any courses on there that if the board chose not to approve some of the links, or when they see them at the next board meeting, they could still run the course without using those?
Yeah, the issue would be is, I don't know if they have enough to cover for however long they find, so they have to bring additional materials. But they could start for sure.
The Myth, Myth Busting Wonder Woman is completely dependent on the science.
She has some additional, like, articles and stuff, but it's mostly the science material. Then again, it'll come in September.
What will come in September? The additional materials? Okay.
Where, where is the Myth Busting course going to be taught?
At the middle school.
Are these all middle school? Cause they're not identified, some of them.
Yeah, they're all middle school. They're Lakeland Middle School specifically.
So there are electives, all at Lakeland Middle School? Well, as long as we're talking about electives, may I ask a question? Go for it. Are we making any effort to reinstitute, uh, shop classes, that sort of thing?
Not at this point in time.
Yeah, I'm with you on that.
I'm very, very concerned about that.
I will, I will bring that to the attention of our new principal over there and start having that conversation.
We have it at one middle school. We don't at the other.
We don't have any equipment over there anymore.
Unfortunately.
Wasn't me.
Do we have a list of the equipment that we lost over there or that was?
Or where it went?
Yeah.
There should be a dis-. Resumes to.
Chose to do that.
Yeah.
Well, with respect to the possibility of bringing it back, we need to know what would cost to bring the program back.
Well, or we, or if there were certain, um, businesses in our community and in that community extends all the way over to Spokane, because there's quite a few over there that are very good at helping the schools stay up to date. We could, if we knew what the list was, you know, we might be able to go to the community and say, here's our need, you know? Um, especially this time of year, because they get, they can have tax write-ups actually.
And I am creating just for you guys, so for some more clarity, cause I don't have a list of all of the course proposals that have been submitted over the course of the last couple of years. So I am trying to put a list together, so when we do the supplemental curriculum, you guys will, will have on the agenda of just a, we'll just do a running list so that you guys see and then what school it was approved for, so that you know. Um, so there's a little bit more clarity. But I'm working on, I don't, I don't have those, so I'm going through old work, trying to find what's been approved and not, so... But I'll make a list for you, so that you know when you're approving it from here on out, you know what you looked for as far as those additional kind of elective courses.
Okay.
Specific to school sites.
Any further conversation on course proposals?
I don't, should, should I know? I don't have any. Where do you get more information on the one, right, the personal finance?
Yeah, that'll, that'll come in September.
You look relaxed, Bob.
No, I don't have any more comment. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, we're, we're just approve the, uh, I, I don't, we're just, the ones that we didn't have the links to, we just approved the course proposal pending the curriculum.
Correct.
Um, and then the other ones, I'm, I'm fine with them, they're okay.
So the only one we have active links to was the modern culture and entertainment.
Right. And the Mythbusters doesn't have anything linked in. I think it's just sort of written out what they're gonna be doing.
Right.
But they'll be using the amplify science.
Yeah, the science curriculum.
Okay, I would move, if nobody else has any more comments.
Nope.
Okay, I would just move to, um, approve the supplementals, um, for the modern culture and entertainment for use, and then the others that were waiting pending the, uh, curriculum at, at next meeting.
You mean the course proposals?
Course proposals, yes.
So we have a motion.
Certainly.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
No.
Can they use, start these courses, just not use the materials until, when they can start, the other stuff has been approved?
Moving on to the operational plan, the LJSD operational plan.
Yep, so every six months until next August, we have to, um, update our operational plan. That was a condition of receiving the SRO dollars. Uh, I sent our current operational plan out to every parent in the district through Sky Alert and asked for feedback and got zero feedback, um, which I take to, I, I understand from that, that they are happy with the way it is and we don't need to fix anything. So we will just.
Nothing broken, don't fix it.
Exactly. They're operating in green, as we've operated for press. So no changes recommended.
Move to approve operating.
One second. Having a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
As an, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
No, finish, finish your vote.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
As an aside, sorry, um, I did get, uh, contacted by, um, pharmacy, can't remember now which one, wanting to set up a vaccination clinic, um, at our schools. And I thanked them and said no, so...
Right, that's right.
I don't, I just don't want parents to feel like we're pushing the vaccines at all, so...
No.
So I declined.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the beginning salary for ADSS.
This would be not for this year, but we do have the positions open. So when we started the program, uh, we, um, the starting pay for the ADSS was the same starting pay for the, um, teach, starting teacher, because the amount of training that we were expecting from them was so great. Um, so our starting teacher salary has increased drastically and we didn't do anything with the ADSS salaries. And because we now have a district in the north who's using our program, we should took full credit for it. Using our program and their starting pay is fifty-five thousand up north, so...
And you created that program, correct?
I created that program. Yes. Um, so I'm not asking that we match what they're asking or they're going to pay, but at least stay in line with what our intention was from the beginning, which was to have it do the same as the starting teacher's salary. And we do have positions open right now, um, that we will look to fill if we're gonna move away from the county SRO, if that becomes too expensive for us. So just wanna...
Well, I, I guess my struggle is, I do understand the whole, let's keep them equal with a teacher, I guess, to some degree, but on the other hand, I don't. Um, we have other positions in this district that people can walk into and they're making more than a teacher. Um, even in buildings, we do. I don't necessarily agree that what their task to do merits the lowest... I, I, I just, I don't agree with that. Everyone else can disagree with me, but...
I would be happy to have it higher. I just, um, was trying to at least honor and be intent when we first started the program by
Okay.
keeping it, but, and we can have that discussion. Um, this isn't a burning issue. We can have, we can, um, have discussion about it and not take action tonight, but I do, we do need to make a decision, because we will do some interviews this year.
Right.
It feels like, so...
Well, would it be more prudent to, I hear what you're saying. You would like us to bump up to forty-seven, four seventy-seven? I personally think it should be bumped up higher than that, but I do believe that that conversation is better had after we have the, uh, budget issue discussion.
Yep.
So I'm just throwing that out there.
Caught it.
Yay.
Do you think it's important to stay competitive?
Oh, I absolutely agree. Um, and I don't know that just bumping it up to the level of the teachers maintains competition. I, I just, yeah. I didn't realize that we started them out so low. Okay. So, do we feel comfortable bumping the wage up as the intention of the program, or do we think that merits holding off until we have the budget conversation?
I'm perfectly willing to accept the second hand recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree, yeah.
Okay. On that, we need a motion.
Move to approve the recommendation.
One second.
Having a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Can I clarify a question?
Yep.
Are we, so that's just for next year?
Okay.
I just want to make sure.
That's for this school year, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, I, was your intent twenty-four, twenty-five?
Uh... It says on here twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
That's this year.
Okay, so we have to, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Which we need to do, so we don't lose them. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
No worries. That's this year.
Is your?
Cause to me, we're already in this year.
Yeah.
As we're harvest. Oh, for sure. We're in, this year we're deep.
I, can you make a note, um, and regarding the ADSS salary, uh, for the budget? When we have to review that, have that conversation. I still weren't lost by the wayside and then we're like, oh, wait. Okay, um, appoint sick leave committee. Now, there's no recommendations on here.
No, you get to make the decision.
Okay, but a little input would be good.
Okay. Um, currently, I am on there.
Correct.
I'm not recommending that I continue.
Or you can't.
And, uh, Chris McDougal is, is, has been on there. So I would recommend that the assistant superintendent be on that committee, and then a building principal.
Okay. Um, what is the advantage to having an assistant soup on that committee?
Um, I just, as the assistant soup, when I was on that committee, uh, had a little bit more background knowledge. I don't know that that benefited anybody but me, but I felt really confident in making, casting a vote as far as whether I felt like it was, it fit the sick leave bank criteria or not. Um, it can be whomever you want. Just has to be a district administrator.
Great. Um, I guess just my only concern is the amount of work that the upper administration is doing.
This takes very little time. Yeah, usually I provide, um, I don't provide names. I do, uh, provide, uh, the nature of, um...
Yeah, usually I provide, um, I don't provide names, I do, uh, provide, uh, the nature of, um, the illness, and, um, sometimes how long, you know, they've been in the district, which doesn't matter, um, per negotiated agreement, but a lot of our, uh, the team wants to know that they're just not gonna leave these days and then skip out, that type of thing.
Right.
So it's usually an email, and then they send their vote back via email.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, it's usually a pretty, you know.
I hear you.
Fast process.
Were you on the, the sick leave committee bank as the assistant, or were you, when you got into the assistant position, were you already part of the bank?
I was already part of the bank.
Okay.
I, it's one of those, you get in and then you never get out.
She's taking, she's taking the advantage, she's like, I'm out. Vote someone else in. Well, I think personally that we should consider a second principal, in the sense that we have Chris McDougal for middle school, um, from the school arena. I don't know, someone from the elementary land, or, I just think that would be more appropriate than requiring someone from the district office to sit on that committee.
You know, I, we have, uh, we've had two teachers that are also.
Right, the LEA points, those?
Okay.
There's two teachers and two.
Gosh, yeah.
The negotiated agreement specifically says the board appoints the administrators and then the LEA points teachers.
Yeah.
Okay, I just don't wanna categorize. No.
What do you mean?
Like, if I only have two administrators on there, one votes for, one votes against, I just wanna make sure that we still have, you know.
Well, there's only four bodies on the committee list on there.
Control is mine.
Yeah.
I know.
That seems kinda silly, that should maybe be revamped when we look at the negotiation.
When we start that process in February this year.
So there's, you know, that tiebreaker. Okay, I personally think that it should be another, uh, person in a principalship capacity, or an assistant principalship capacity. Two principals.
Yeah, I, I, I kinda hear what you're saying, although I think maybe from a communications standpoint, it might even potentially have somebody within the district office.
However, when she was first on it, she wasn't on it. I mean, she wasn't in the district at all.
That was probably a mistake.
Sure it wasn't. There's really, I, I, there was no communication for me, I mean, I, because I worked so closely with Brooke, I was aware of the request before they went out to the whole team, so I, I just had that background knowledge, but, um, everything, all of the work on it really resides with Brooke, and all I did was cast a vote, so as far as communication, that's Brooke's, that's Brooke's around, so. I would be completely comfortable with an elementary person and a secondary person.
So who are we nominating? Who are we electing? Who are we appointing?
Well, we can reappoint Mr. McDougal.
Okay.
Since he so joyfully seems to enjoy the position. Um, and then appoint another person.
Another one.
Yeah.
And who would you suggest? Since it was your idea.
Um, let's see, let's, we'll just start with, we'll work our way down, let's go to Lisa Hoffman, Betty Kiefer.
Lisa Hoffman, so we have two nominees.
I'm coming up on that.
Sounds good to me.
Move for approval.
Second, you have a motion in a second, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
They haven't been here at this meeting, so appointed.
That's usually how it works. No, I was actually just there, and then we could go to John Brown, and then we could get, you know, four years, or annual increment, so every year we could just rotate them. Yeah, I think it's important. Um, okay, so, bus routes?
Just the annual approval of the bus routes, Jessica, um, modifying them a little bit to, um, reflect the changes in Garwood, um, attendance, so.
Okay, and it looks like we're down two drivers?
Yep.
Based on, well, that's better than five.
Right, and she's actively trying to recruit. Um, we had, we thought we actually were gonna start better this year than we did last year, but we had a couple of trainees who couldn't pass the test.
No, I, I, I respect that, because I wouldn't.
Do we have any identified non-transportation zones?
Um, I'm sure that we do, and she's not here.
I think the board has two those in the lab.
No new non-transportation zones, just the ones that have been approved in the past. Do those have to be annually approved also?
I think so.
Okay, I will ask her.
I could.
I will ask her.
But I kinda wrecked what I'm doing.
Okay.
Two hundred and eighty-five pages, that's a bit much.
We are going to, um, also, since we're talking about transportation, we are going to post on the website this year, the emergency snow route, um, stops, so that we don't have to, we don't have the issues with the ice higher up where we had the Kansas school, because we couldn't get the buses up. And so we'll get those posted, um, by October, so that, um, parents know exactly where their stop is, and can help.
Shouldn't we post those before school starts?
It's just, we only use them in the winter time.
Okay, okay.
So, I will send it up.
I think it would be good to communicate to the parents on those routes.
Oh yeah, we will.
That those could be forthcoming, so it isn't a surprise.
We use, we used them last year, I just want them like front and center on, on, so they're easily found on the website, but we did use them last year. And there'll be communication in the, um, blatant highlights back to the parents.
Yeah.
Just so they know exactly where their stop is.
So in these bus routes, have there been any, uh, really drastic changes like we had before, where stocks went away and parents have to go a mile down the road, or any of that?
No, um, no, nothing since, I think she, at the end of, toward the end of last year, she had to combine a couple of routes, cause we lost drivers, and so we had some parents that had to, um, uh, transport their kids to a bus stop. Okay. The other thing she did last year with the, uh, at, um, Twin Lakes Elementary, is, um, they used to run a bus route through Twin Lakes Elementary, but now they've got that gate open, and it's been open for a long time, but the whole reason that we initially brought the buses into Twin Lakes Village was that gate on Rice Road was closed, and kids couldn't walk that way, so they'd come around the highway. Um, so technically, we, we shouldn't have been getting reversed for the routes through Twin Lakes Village, because kids could walk to the school, so Jessica has one stop now, up by the convenience stores, and that's the only place that the bus goes, and then they're out again, so, but that was a change that was made last year.
Still a bit a mile and a half around. Oh, I guess that's the other thing, you know, if we have, if we have identified safety busing zones.
Did she, did she not have that in her?
Uh, you know, I'm going through this, I'm not seeing it, but it might be. There's a lot of stuff here.
Right.
Yeah, you scroll beneath, like, most of these are spotted.
All of the busing, like Radiant Lake area is safety busing.
Radiant Lake, yeah.
Because of crossing highway.
Oh. That's where I'm getting at. We looked at the safety busing policy today, I'm like, I know I've seen it. Yeah, no, it's not here, it's dead. Which we don't have, so.
So she must just have the street names in there, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cause Radiant Lake or Safety, it doesn't come up. The landmark's just a. It's not there.
Okay. I would think Camper Road would be, Bob, wouldn't that be a safety busing? Wouldn't Camper be a safety busing situation? Does, cause I just saw that, um.
Yeah, I was trying to look for it.
Camper's on there.
But I don't, I don't see, I didn't see that she had put safety busing, so she's got all of the routes, but she hasn't identified which ones are safe.
No, she does say on there, uh, pull on highway and use hazards. And then the next one, use eight ways, pull into turn lane and use eight ways. And that one shouldn't have any note, this one.
No note.
So there must be good enough pull over there, North Camper and North Highway, running through the forty-one.
Oh yeah, it's the private turn-in to the school, that's where the bus parks.
Oh, okay, and the other ones are just out on the road, I guess. See, this one says pull in turn lane and use eight ways.
Well, that's, the, the only thing that is there is the, the turn-in to the development, and the bus just stops there.
Yeah, so where, what are the roads that they would be stopping on over in Radiant Lake, because Christine doesn't come up, maybe Majestic or Ohio, I don't know.
Uh, Fair.
I don't, are the names with streets in there?
Oh, Majestic, okay, yep, yep, Fair, Salt Creek, Majestic, yep, okay. Those are all in there, but they're not notated.
None of them are notated as safety routes, which we need to do for the state, because, um, they're within a mile and a half of the school.
So when she identifies, uh, without identifying special routes, what is that? Is that for, like, IUPs, um, and those types of things?
Special routes.
Things, okay.
So if, um, the board's okay, I, what I would ask Jessica to do is, is to provide for you the non-transpersion, transportation zones, and then specifically the safety busing to be approved, and then if we're going to do a special, we need to talk about the budget, and I'll ask her to have those for you, so that you can approve those.
All right, just school starting.
It says see special instructions, but there is, it isn't good.
Move to approve the special instructions, right?
Do you need to have any further conversation? Okay.
Certainly.
We have a motion in a second, all the papers say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the student handbooks.
Then Dr. Pasley went through and updated the policies that have been approved.
Great.
We're still in the process, but several of the policies that'll be approved, and I have to go back in there, so, um, it's a work in progress. There's about three or four that we are currently working on, so they'll be updated, and then I was explaining to Board Chair Thompson that, um, throughout the school year, as these policies come up, if they are specific to our, um, student handbook, I just go in there and change them and update, since it is a live doc. Um, so it's just not a one time at the beginning, and I try to do it all along, so that, because that digital, um, handbook goes out, that it's the most updated policy, so that there isn't a disconnect between what's in the policy and then what's on our website. So, there are some changes I will have to make if you approve all the policies from tonight.
Um, something though that I do wanna point out, um, well, first of all, I believe it was a trustee Bane that wanted it just to say diploma, maybe it was regular diploma, but I think it just needs to say diploma. Um, within the handbook, we are only, uh, identifying forty-six credits. In our policy, prior to what you're going to be receiving, we were requiring more. And the policy that we're gonna review tonight, we're requiring forty-eight, not forty-six, according to statute, we're allowed to, you know, you have to have the minimum forty-six, but if the school chooses, they can require more. So, I don't know what, how we want to resolve the fact that nowhere in our policies are we addressing forty-six credits. However, in the student handbook, we're saying, you just need forty-six credits, but our policy is going to conflict with that. So we either need to adopt a higher standard, if we're going to endorse forty-eight credits, and put that in the handbook, or we need to revamp the policy to identify the fact that you only need forty-six credits to graduate, and not hold to a higher standard. Cause it's conflicting, and there are parents, and we sent out, which we will have, um, for feedback from policy committees sent out to parents, and staff was actually the conflicting, you know, they're like, state only requires forty-six, stop requiring forty-eight. So, that was a little, um, I guess disheartening in the sense that I think we should always be trying to raise the bar, but, um, if the board wants to have the district maintain only forty-six, then what we have in the handbook and in the policy need to mirror. And if we're going to require forty-eight, then that needs to be identified in the handbook.
I agree. Kind of a mixed discussion.
Mm-hmm.
If we're going to require forty-eight, the additional two credits, are those in any way identified?
On the policy, they are.
On the policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And it was, uh, history, was a one, no. Was history the additional two credits? Okay.
It's, no, one, one credit.
Was one credit?
And then one elective.
One additional elective, okay.
Right. Yeah, and elective.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I can't tell you the top of the hand, yeah.
The way the policy used to read was, we, we offer, they did, they, we offer forty-eight credits over four years, they have to pass forty-six of those credits, and the high school graduation requirements from the state say that you have to pass algebra, and you have to pass geometry. Those are the only things specified in the statute that you have to pass. So we offer all of the things that they tell us to offer, but the forty-six credits will ask kids to not do well in the class and still be able to graduate on time.
The way the policy used to read is, it would say, learn to graduate forty, but then it would say no, that the state requires forty-six, and that was a piece that was kind of confusing, but my understanding is where we got that is it's one additional elective. You wanna come up, all the high school people, and get.
Sarah's sitting in the corner.
Get the expert.
Yeah.
I'm far from that, but, uh.
The forty-eight credits, is that in the additional US history and an additional?
So we do, offer, or make our kids take three, uh, semesters of, of history.
US history.
That is, that is above and beyond what the state actually does require. Um, but it was my understanding that we, we always have at Lakeland High School and Lakeland School District always had, had our bar a little higher than what the state of Idaho, I think what had happened, and I'm not exactly sure, but I, I think what had happened was. I think what had happened, I'm not exactly sure, but I, I think what had happened was kids would meet the, the state of Idaho requirement, but not the Lakeland School District requirement. And we'd get ourselves into a, where a parent would say, well, my kid actually graduated compared to the state of Idaho regulations, but not to the Lakeland School District regulations, but, um, not missing.
Was that tied to the advanced diploma?
No, that's a good question. I don't think so.
No, we, I don't think we offered the advanced diploma.
Or we don't now, but we did.
Right, we did.
The advanced diploma was more about what classes you took and not how many.
I'm not opposed of, of raising the bar. I think I heard somebody say that, that it's not a bad idea, this is not a bad idea to raise the bar and let our kids do a little bit more than what the average kid would do. I think that was equal to before our district. In what areas, that's a great question, you know, now that they've decreased the amount of years that are required in math, what areas do we find, um, crucial?
So, that being said, respectfully, if we approve the handbook, whatever we decide on the graduation, do need to mirror each other, um, graduation requirements. Cause it's, it's, it is frustrating to look here and be, oh, forty-six, oh, we follow the policy. No, it's forty-eight. So which is it? And then, you know, because the state does require minimum standards or get forty-six credits.
Yeah, they make them do it extra. But state, state law says forty-six and they graduate at forty-six, you can't make them do forty-eight.
Yeah, we, the minimum is forty-six.
Right.
We could, we can set our bar higher than the state minimum.
The statute gives, gives...
Do you want?
Yeah, the statute says that the district may require more.
A couple of times it says that, is that the...
Yeah. So, I mean...
Well, it's a simple matter. I mean, let's just say we're going to make the handbook consistent with what the policy is.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay.
Policy is about forty-six, that's forty-six.
So we can, we can, uh, we can just say whatever class that's required to graduate in. I mean, we can add whatever, so we can add P E back, right?
Yep.
P E is required.
Yep, only one credit.
Did somebody say they got rid of it, P E requirements?
Um, it's, it's, uh...
It's not required, but at the state level.
No, but I, but we require the kids to take at least one semester. We do.
Not anymore.
We don't anymore?
No. We're like, we're like, no, with the, with the state of Idaho. I would, I would personally love Lakeland School District to say, we require kids to take P E for at least one semester. That's a very healthy message to send our kids.
Spoken by a true P E health teacher. No bias there.
No bias.
Um, I don't know about your copy. My copy has all kinds of clerical typing.
Yeah.
Mumble jumbo in it.
Yeah. Like when it compiled into PDF, it, uh, the, um...
It got weird.
Or...
Yeah. The formatting got strange.
Yeah, okay, that's...
It's another disadvantage to Google. It typed over itself.
Okay, yeah, that's not my version. I'm looking at Ice Pretty version, so sorry.
It's cause you have the Lakeland.
Let's go by your version.
Well, I, I would say not PDF, some of it's not to PDF because it should be like, oh, when we send out to principals, we'll send it out in a live link and I'll just say anybody with the link in view, only because as we do policy, I do update it, um, I don't have the principals to mess with that, just so that, you know. And then I actually take out, um, and again, I say this all the time, but Rebecca and I started this and Rebecca did a bunch of the work at the very beginning, but we'll take out actual context and excerpts from the statute that are important or the policy that are important. So we update it, so having an actual live link is better than a PDF for parents, just so that it's updated.
And I would hope that when we do update or we make a policy change and we update it in the student handbook, we're sending out a sky alert to say, oh, by the way, please review this policy.
Rebecca's really good about putting that in early print highlights.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, the only other thing is that whole regular diploma. I think there's a regular one.
So it should, it just, it should just say diploma?
Diploma. And I, I would just sort of like to, I know each school is unique. I would like to compliment and thank Lakeland High School for listing all their clubs and everything because Timberlake did not do that. So if they could do that, because there needs to be consistency. Kids need to know what the schools are offering and whatnot, and it's not on there.
Especially now everybody gets to choose where they go to school.
Right.
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 Okay, so you would like Timberlake to list all of their clubs likely.
Yes.
Shannon from Lakeland High School reached out to me and then got, and asked for the list of the approved clubs so that she could verify what she put in there was, has been approved. I will ask you to do that.
And since high school's pretty significant on the electives, cause those are required courses, I think it's important to have them.
What electives listed for Bob?
Yes. Okay. So, um... Any other questions, comments, or conversations about the student handbooks?
No. I think the handbook like Bob assumed should match the policy, whatever we decide the policy would be.
Yes.
It's a live document.
Yes. It breathes. Okay, that being said, I'll undertake a motion at this time if there's further conversation.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the, uh, Cootin County Sheriff's Office MOU for Timberlake High School. This is to produce a second SRO officer as we no longer have a police force apparently up in Spirit Lake.
But anyway, it's going to be reconstituted. They hired a new place.
I did see they hired a new chief, yeah.
He's busy hiring seven more people.
That's what the last chief said, and he lasted for a month, so...
Well, and the other one officer that is up there, he also comes down here to, to do perks, so, um, we should grant them some grace to get their stuff figured out, um, and then we'll bind into this, uh, MOU? Any questions on the MOU?
No.
No.
All right, motion?
I approve.
So MOU for Timberlake High School. For mine, I seconded. We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to the clerical error amendment in the negotiated agreement. It is my understanding that when it was brought to us, we were explained how the transition from the old salary matrix to the new salary matrix would occur. And that language didn't get added into the document.
It missed it. And so we tran, so we transitioned all of our current people onto the new salary schedule. So some of our people who have seven years in the district are in step one on the new salary schedule because the increase at the beginning was so great. So if we follow what's actually in the negotiated agreement right now, people coming from outside the district who have seven years of experience would get placed on step eight in the new salary schedule, which would be seven steps ahead of our current people who've also got seven years of experience. So in this transitional year, we need to be able to place our new people on the old salary schedule where they would have fallen and then put them onto the new salary schedule and treat them just like we did our existing staff. So we just need to update that language.
What, what page?
It is...
Page four. And it's the blue highlighted, um, letter. So then for next year, when we enter into the negotiating agreement, it will have the standard language of where you'll be placed on that new scale that got adopted this last year.
Yeah, we will have to discuss that further in the negotiated agreement. This was just, it's really difficult.
Got it.
That'll be part of what we, his board has talked about.
This is the board, same, okay, yeah, I saw that.
Okay, yeah. Just the same thing.
Yeah. Comments or questions, Bob? You're pondering.
Yeah, I'm pondering, uh, will, will we make another change in that language next year? Or is it important?
We'll have to take a look at what that looks like.
Yeah.
But remember, we agreed that the board would start going through the negotiated agreement at some workshops starting in January or February.
Right.
So that we're prepared when we go into IBB to make sure that, that we're taking care of some of the board's areas of concerns. So that will be part of that.
You've seen this?
Yes, yeah.
Originally we had talked, you know, going to that step eight, um, you know, if you're looking at the, if somebody transfers in a year twenty plus, you know, then you have to have a start, you know, a starting point for them. So it was discussed they would be put probably there. Somehow the information got put in the negotiated agreement that that's where, you know, everybody would start there on a seven year or eight year. And then we'll look at it again in IBB.
We just have a lot of veteran staff that we need to honor.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it, it may be that we have to do, we have to put them on the old salary schedule and put them on the new salary schedule for a couple of years until our people have kind of worked their way down a little bit. Because you're gonna have the same issue next year where you've got that person with eight years of experience and you put them on the new salary schedule, but the person in our, who've been with us for eight years are now on step two. So we're gonna have to work through what we want that to look like.
Yeah, right.
It could be that this process exists for a while until our people have moved sufficiently. But that's for IBB in Spirit.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Welcome. Moving on to the alternative authorizations, it appears there's only one. Was this gentleman hired this year or?
Yeah, he's been hired for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Does what he previously began transfer over, or is he starting over?
So, yeah, he, um, he did not finish. So basically, from what I understand, this, he would take the practices. He's not gonna end up in a, in a program or anything, and so, um, but those two prior years, this would just count as the first year, from what I understand.
So he's, we're still gonna have to do three years of an alternate authorization?
Well, he does, he'll have to have the mentor part of it too. That'll be part of the requirement, but I mean, he can probably complete just about everything this year depending, so...
Okay.
He's just gonna pass the practices for the actual study.
Any conversation you could have?
Well, I'm concerned that if he didn't do it once, why would he do it now?
I think he moved on, it was an emergency, um, situation. He left, he left school districts and so he went into another job. They didn't have anybody, from what I understand, and they asked him to do it and then he just didn't stay because of, of this district.
Okay, gotcha. So we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving into board policy. We have ten items.
Busy, busy little bees.
We get to have another meeting Wednesday for more, because there's so much that needs to be done. Okay, first policy. How do you guys wanna do this, there's, um...
I have no questions.
Me neither.
Okay, Bob, questions?
No.
All right.
The move that we approve on the board policies is presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to discussion items. Trustee Koby, you asked for water, sewer maintenance and facilities to be added to the agenda so that we can have a discussion. Let's talk.
All right. So, Mike, if you could, uh, give some answers real quick.
Sure.
So my frustration, I know you're trying.
Yeah.
You know, I know you're, I'm not trying to throw you in the bus, but, um, so the showers at Lakeland High School, they've been leaking water since I've been here, seventeen years. And we're not talking a little drip, we're talking steady stream of water out of multiple shower halls. All I know is that costs is water, it costs is sewer, I thought that. Also, um, I was talking to a well driller, there's a well on Lakeland's property somewhere.
Mm-hmm, in front, yes, outside. I don't, I don't know much about it, no, it was done under previous administration. It was supposed to be for a Jimmy might have, you have any information about that? It was a Trent, it was a Trent deal, I don't, I wasn't involved in it.
Right.
So, yeah, I don't know.
So if we have a well?
Yeah.
And, so why can't we use that well?
Yeah, I don't know.
It's our well, we have a well, we're on...
It's an eight inch.
They have a well at Timberlake High School too. My understanding and what I do know, it was some sort of a program where kids go out there and, and take like readings or something, or some, and I don't know how it all came to. I wasn't involved in either of those, uh, projects, so, um...
So maybe we could research it and see if we could actually use it.
Yeah.
Put the well there. Cost of water.
Sure.
And then, um...
Especially if it, even if it's for irrigation.
Yeah. Well, you know, at the high school, so we have a field that somebody has to go there, hook up the, the water every day. And it's irrigation pipe from the prairie days. So it leaks like crazy. It doesn't water good, and then that person has to go back over there, shut it down, and then, you know, so you're taking a maintenance guy to do that. So, you know, we should put a sprinkler system in if we're gonna, you know, continue to water that area because we have to water during the day because there's someone here.
Yeah.
To turn it on at four o'clock in the morning.
Right.
You know, and I'm just thinking, you know, trying to save the district money. Cause water is expensive, mine bill just doubled.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the irrigation you're talking about, about the tennis courts, Matt and I have been talking about that for a couple of years, and I've, I've passed along a couple quotes numerous times, and, uh, it comes down to funding. I mean, I'm a huge supporter of it, uh, because we are, we just, we, you waste, it's just archaic.
Yeah.
To have to move hand lines anymore, it's just old school.
I mean, thousands, and, and we're losing water, it's not even getting...
It's not, exactly, exactly. So, yeah, I have, I mean, that entire area to include the end of the bleachers and everything would have been under timer. So...
We didn't do it last year because we didn't have a plant facility levy to fund facility projects.
Right.
Is that something?
Well, the sad thing is, is the board never heard about it. I've been here four years and it's never been brought to our attention. So that's really frustrating when the people that are in charge of these things, you know, the board gets bypassed. And really ultimately, it's our decision to make, it should come to the board so we know what's going on in the district and where, especially if it's been seventeen years, you've tried several times to do your due diligence, but it's never made it to us.
Right.
That, that should not be, we should know what all the needs are by the professionals that we hire to be in charge of that so the board can make the decision of where the money's fit. Not everybody filter it before it gets to us. Not everybody filter it before it gets to us. That should not be happening. It, it needs to come here.
Well, it's just like, you know, the locker room that the high school floods, sewer backup.
Right, right.
So that needs to be, because we're, we have to pay somebody to come in and clean that every time it floods. Because it's hazmat, right?
Yeah, yeah, we will. I mean, my guys will go, but our problem is our snake isn't long enough. A lot of the times, the instructions, the last few times were like way down the bike.
Yeah, so you don't need to be fixed. Because we're paying money for a cleanup effort every year. It's, it's like, it's just keeps going and we're just wasting taxpayer money over and over. You know, we just, I don't know, if he comes to us and says, hey, we need to fix this. We need to fix the stuff that's, that's costing the district more money every year. First, that should be priority. Just like the fire, they're on it like that. You know, the plumbing's bad, you know, that's bad, we gotta fix it.
Like we talked about with the board workshop and doing that more on a, on a, on a regular basis would be a platform for that type of conversation. Keeping you guys in the loop, because often, I'm, I'm just the boots on the ground. I, I'm an information giver. I give it, and then
Yeah.
where it goes from there, I don't know. I don't hear, I don't, I don't hear anything back.
We don't know either.
Right. So, I think that would be beneficial, you know, staying with that plan. Um, but, yeah, as far as leaky fixtures and things, it's a, it's a daily and weekly quarter for, for our department across the board.
Right.
And that's just because of old infrastructure and things like that. Um, the showers at Lakeland High School were, actually, the day of the fire, Sawyer was over there all day getting those things buttoned up.
Right.
So, they should be, they should be, they work. Okay, good, good. Um, so.
Did you bring soap?
I tried to, I tried to jump on stuff like that as quick as I can. I don't unfortunately see, like, irrigation is a big one, and I don't see bills and things, so I just wait for an app to say, hey, we have massive water usage at Timberlake High School, and then we go investigate.
Yeah, and it's too late.
Right, exactly. Oftentimes, I mean, we're, we're, it could be a month goes by before, you know, something shows that we've got a major leak. And we've had a few major leaks.
So don't, don't our meters have leak detectors on them that?
They do, but that would require, now, what we could do, I did this, one, one of the first jobs I had in maintenance was, was meter reading, actually. We would go once a month and we would go and read the meters, and that was how you could identify a problem, possibly. Um, of course, it comes down to time, and, and I have to devote somebody to do that. I mean, there's a lot of freaking meters in the district. So, um, that's an option, we could, we could pursue that. For sure, as, as it means to try to catch something before, you know, it, it runs longer than it needs to, I guess. So, um, but we practice jumping on it as quick as I can and I know about it, so.
The, the facilities report section of the agenda that we have tonight could be a monthly report from Mike, so that it gives him the option.
Are we currently paying for the water on the football field?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Are we currently paying for the water that's used for irrigation on the football field?
Lakeland High School football?
Yes.
The only thing that's not metered right now over there that I'm aware of is the practice field. However, the city's aware of that, and they were supposed to sink a meter and repair a curb stop that's been leaking for, on their side, for a couple of years or more. So, but currently, that's the only, only field that we irrigate that's not under, under a meter.
I ask a question. That, that field was originally developed as a joint project with the city of Rathston.
Football field?
Football field. And the state of Idaho, Park and Grant. And part of that original agreement was that the city was just blocking water, but it may have changed somewhere along the line.
We should do.
Yeah, definitely a meter on it.
Bob, I think the baseball field and that tennis court area would, is, I believe, was city as well. I believe that.
Not the baseball field. The baseball field was developed, you know, several years after the football field was developed. And it was not a part of that, that grant that we got from state of Idaho to help develop that field. So I know that, you know, whatever was going on on the baseball field probably is metered and they're paying for that, and that's, and that was expected when that happened. The other one was a different story, because that was a joint project between the school district, the city of Rathston, and the state of Idaho, and the Park and Grant, and the state of Idaho.
So the leak is before the meter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So can we find out about those wells though?
Yeah, I can research that. I'll have to, I don't see, nobody is around who was here when those were put in. I'll.
Should just be uploaded up on the Department of Idaho's Department of Water Resources?
Yeah, the one at Lakeland High School is the most recent one. That one was done probably around twenty eighteen-ish, seventeen maybe?
Oh, that's pretty recent.
That one is. Timberlake, I don't know. I'll take a little bit of, a little bit of digging. Um, but, yeah, I can, I can see what I can come up with and find out what.
Those might have been done with a grant specifically for water testing for classes. So I don't know how, I don't know that it's a very large well.
Yeah, I just know students were involved with both. I just don't know the.
Exactly.
It's water. It's water.
It's an eight inch.
That's a good, that's a good size.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
If it's in the aquifer.
Did Zach dig it?
No, he just saw it, like, when he was, how he doing his job.
I wanna say it was H two O, but, um, he's like, you know, there's a well on Lakeland's property. Yeah.
No, the way it don't use it.
After we, after we developed that property over there, I'm missing a piece or two, but we had some discussions about putting a well in for irrigation purposes, I missed it many moons ago. I was telling Dave that when the highway department redid the highway out here at one point, I got them to put in a, a sleeve under the highway so that we could run a pipe through that to bring irrigation water over to the junior, if and when we ever put a well in. So, just these.
Yeah, that would be nice. So we might have to pull off the school to irrigate. Um, yeah, but to your point, um, I, I completely agree, and I, I, I wanna green light all those projects. Matt? I mean, he'll tell ya. We, we just need to.
Thumbs up to do that.
Did you have any other questions?
Um, I do have a quick question.
Okay.
It's not really. You shouldn't send me to him out. I'm poking all over the place. Because I did talk to Lisa a little bit today, um, sort of on a different topic. But I, a few years back, we were getting reports of, like, for facilities and maintenance. It's okay. Squirrel. Um, you know, that, a light bulb went here, or that toilet paper went there, and it seemed like your department was bogged down with minute transactions. I just wanna make sure that you, this board doesn't care about the light bulb going out the door. We care about the work that needs to be done. So I just wanna make sure that you understand that from the board's perspective, that it's, 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 you know, light bulbs should make it there in thirty seconds, not weeks down the road. And I would assume that you have put measures in place to make that happen.
Yeah, who was, who was offering the reports to you? What, what was?
The prior superintendent was giving us a report that was allegedly coming from your department. So I'm gonna assume it came from your department. I don't know. But it was very, um, interesting, the information that was on there, because it was quite remedial. And it had nothing to do with district maintenance, as far as I was concerned, as, you know, structural stuff that needs to be repaired within, inside the buildings, which was what we're looking for. And what we got was light bulbs and toilet paper and stuff like that.
Yeah, I don't know. I've never, I've never.
Yeah, I saw.
Oh, the work order reports? Oh, okay, that was, yeah, Brian was giving work order reports. That was just showing what, what we are doing daily. Is that what you're, is that what you're?
All I know is it's irrelevant to me. I don't care how many rolls of toilet paper go in which building.
I agree, yeah.
I do care about structural repair that needs to occur.
Yeah, right.
I just wanna make sure that you understand that, at least my perspective.
Okay, yeah, we're on the same page.
Good.
Yep.
So I found the well information. Um, I'm gonna email it to you guys. It was constructed in August fifteen of two thousand seventeen, and it is just a monitoring well, but you might be able to use it for irrigation, because it's not potable water.
Uh-huh.
Although it's big enough. Um, yeah, but it is listed as just a, a monitoring well, but also need a permit ID and everything for it.
I'm sure that's what Timberlake.
Two hundred and twenty-two feet deep. Do you know where it is, Mike?
Yeah, when you walk in the main entrance on the staff side, it's right to the left, on that last patch of grass, right before you get to the football fence.
Okay.
Yeah, right at the bottom of the hill.
Yeah, it was H two.
And they got a fence around it. The kids can't play with it, I guess.
That's awesome. This is to you too.
So it was H two O, but it's been sealed and, sealed and everything, so it's, it's.
Seen the pump in there?
Yeah, you probably could use it for irrigation.
Yeah, and I wouldn't have any idea what any kind of agreement was with H two O and I don't know about any of that stuff, so.
If it's a monitoring well, like, you have a great amount of resources.
Yeah, mm-hmm, right.
I think you have to do like a public thing about, what do you call that?
Just call them.
Public notice or something, and then Zach was kinda explaining.
If it's a monitoring well, I would assume that somebody comes periodically and takes a water sample from it.
Yeah.
Which leads you wanting to believe there must be a pump in there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's the one at Timberlake.
Timberlake's quite, quite a bit older. It's been up there a lot longer.
The monitoring well, twenty sixteen.
Oh, that's always your difference?
I want to spy on her.
Yeah, that's right. There's a lot of grain up there. Dave, how, how, um, those, you said the shower heads over there, they leak, like, twenty-four, seven? They, they, they leak?
They did.
They did leak?
Yeah, they're fixed now.
Oh, okay.
He took a shower.
Okay, oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. I was halfway listening. Yeah, because I always, uh, when you brought up the, the water thing, I always think about these sprinklers up behind us. They water the road. It drives me nuts. You know, but they might need to be that way for getting everything. Okay, so those are fixed.
Any further conversation, Dave? Okay. Um, we need to discuss the Hayden Ross audit documents? Is there a reason?
No, they're just for.
Just for information, perfect. Uh, any questions or conversations on the, thank you for bringing it to us. I appreciate it.
I forgot.
Annual.
It's been a long day.
Yes, it has. Um, any comments or questions on those that were presented? Okay, we got seven minutes. SIP tool workshop.
I have no questions.
SIP tool workshop, we just need to schedule a date, because by statute, our SIP is, has to be submitted to the state department by October first.
Okay. So.
It's our annual look at our student achievement data and, uh, setting our goals.
Let's pick a date in September. Would that work? Okay.
Do we have a report?
No, we, we do a SIP workshop where we create the SIP with the superintendent and assistant superintendent.
Were you talking about something else? I thought you were still on the same topic.
Oh, no, I moved on.
Yeah.
Did we have conversation? Did we need to have conversation, Bob? Okie dokie. Um, yeah, the SIP tool workshop. We need a date in September. So our board meeting is the eleventh. Would it behoove anyone to hold it on maybe Monday the, or, let's do Wednesday the thirteenth? Or Monday the eighteenth of September? I don't wanna push it so far to October one that everyone's scrambling.
When's our regular board meeting in September?
The eleventh.
Eleventh.
Yeah, that's the second Monday.
You're talking about the week after that, then?
Yes, because the fourth, I believe, is a holiday. And I don't think we wanna do it on the sixth, which is two days after school starts. So I'm thinking the thirteenth or the eighteenth? Monday the eighteenth? Would that give? I know you will. Will that give you ample time to? Okay.
Yeah, so we'll bring the, we'll bring the template. Lynn can help me get it together before she leaves us.
Okay.
Um, with the template, kind of a draft form, so that we have something to talk about, and then if the board wants to make any changes, that'd be easy.
Okay, perfect.
We'll get it mailed off. Um, on the eighteenth, we have a Rathston, Rathston Chamber monthly meeting.
No, 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 you're right. Thirteenth. That's a line state?
Yes. No, we have policy.
Well, we'll have to bump that.
Yeah.
So September thirteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, six to eight?
Perfect. Okay, we, um, are now going to be offering base at John Brown for this year.
Yay. That was really important with the rezoning of Garwood to provide that for families who would rely on that at Garwood, so. We have a new base coordinator over there, and then, um, the former base coordinator, who is at Bay Keefe now, as a special para, is going to go over and train the base personnel. So that's one of the concerns that we had prior was that we put people in these positions, we don't provide them any training. So we're gonna make sure she's got, um, somebody that'll fit for the first two weeks of training.
Perfect.
And we are going to give priority to the families at Garwood.
Right.
And pat base.
Any input, anybody? Okay. I just hope we can maintain it for the year.
We are committed.
Okay. We were given a template for the website update stuffs?
Mm-hmm, so, uh, the picture, obviously, uh, we will use a drawing, and it will be our district. So what you're actually, the input that we want from you is, um, do you like the layout? Um, we can change the names of those tabs across the top.
So is this the districts, or is this the school building?
This would be the districts, and then up at the, um, top, you can see, top right, there's a, a ta, a link for schools. And then the schools would be attached to our district website. This is what our district website would look like moving forward. Um, one of the things that I would like to put right at the top is, um, financial transparency. Because I tried to find our financial transparency links, and they're buried.
Everything is buried. It's ridiculous.
And I just feel like the financial transparency needs to be front and center for the community, so we're gonna put that link right on that front page.
Well, the thing is, is that the website isn't laid out like the district is actually ran, or like you would, that's the problem is.
We're gonna clean all of that up. It's not intuitive, so, yeah, I agree with you. Um, but this is just aesthetically, are you okay with the way this looks?
It's pretty.
Yeah, it's a pretty picture.
It is a pretty picture, too.
It's gonna look lovely on our website.
Our picture's gonna be pretty.
Where is that school?
I don't know, but it's pretty.
That's the one we're gonna lend the bond for.
Coming soon.
Nice. Okay.
Uh, so, um, our current website will get cloned, no, onto this new template. And then Jackie will start the meticulous work of, we'll go through, um, we're gonna meet every week and just start digging in and taking care of some of the things that Mama was just talking about, so that it is intuitive. And when parents go looking for something, it's very easy to find.
Okay.
Because right now.
And I did already make comments about the whole cloning concept, so.
How long you anticipate that process will take to?
How long do you anticipate that process will take to get to publishing stage?
Well, we will publish it as quickly as we can. It'll, it'll get published in October, October.
October? So will we have a chance to see it?
We'll bring you updates as we work on it, so we can see what it's gonna look like.
While it's being built, are we able to keep our current one active?
Okay. And the nice thing about the new website is, um, if we try to do something that violates the ADA laws, it'll say, "Oh, you can't do that."
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, so it'll keep us complaining with ADA.
Okay, so the preschool at Twin Lakes?
So, um, as we looked at John Brown, which was our other option for preschool, we had to make a decision because, um, the board agreed to fence the preschool playground area, so we had to, we had to make a decision long-term about where that was going to be. Because it currently occupies two classrooms at Twin Lakes Elementary that are not regulation-sized classrooms and there's a bathroom, um, we felt like it was the better location than to put them at John Brown where there isn't, they would have the same, access to the same bathroom the rest of the kids have. Um, not a specially designed bathroom and then, um, they would be using full-size classrooms. So, um, we wouldn't put a full-size class in those classrooms that are being used at Twin Lakes right now, so that was why we are opting to stay and it's centrally located.
Are they going to have the appropriate play equipment for the students?
Yeah, we have, we have the play, so we received a donation of twenty-nine thousand dollars at the beginning of last year. We brought that to the board and, um, let the board know that we were gonna use that to purchase the play equipment. It just hasn't been installed because we had to make a decision about where we were gonna keep preschool. And then at the, uh, facilities workshop, the board agreed to include the fencing around the playground equipment as part of the fencing project, so we're all ready, uh, to go with that.
Will that be done before school starts?
Um, we, we have to go out to bid for the fencing project, so that... We just were notified by the state that we got the full allotment that we were hoping for.
Oh, wow.
So we got the hundred, two, two hundred, two hundred twenty thousand.
Oh, yes, nice.
So, um, we will use some money from the plant facility, which we, we set aside for this, but the state is paying for the bulk of the fencing project. Um, so we will go out to bid for that. Uh, Mike went to Twin Lakes Elementary and walked with Tiffany to look again at the area where she wanted to put the playground to make sure that it wasn't gonna cost us a whole bunch of money to put it there because we have to move irrigation and those kinds of things, so I think they have that all dialed in.
Okay.
Mike, you and Tiffany have the preschool playground dialed in as far as where the irrigation is and all of that, right?
We have the finalized location, which was the original location a couple of years ago, um, which will require removal of irrigation and excavation and things like that.
Do we have a, do we know what that will cost us?
I've just got contractors involved in the last week, so I'm waiting on numbers.
Any other comments on preschool? No? Okay. Uh, snow plowing?
So this is just information on who has got contracted to plow the different, um, sites?
Right, the only thing we didn't get, I guess, is just the cost. Um... About how much was spent on the snow plowing?
We, was it two twenty-five for plowing?
I'd like to say that, but it's been a long day, so I don't have it on the top of me.
That's okay, um...
It was definitely more than the hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I believe it was two twenty-five, I don't know.
Don't quote me.
Okay, no quoting.
So it is a Longinia year, we're hoping that that means no snow this year.
It's not going to.
Why would you say that?
I'm hoping for a hard, strong winter.
Just jinxed us, no, no, we don't talk about snow.
We're no... Okay. So it looks like for us to begin, uh, re, uh, taking control, taking control back to the district for snow plowing, looks like there would be, need to be an initial investment of a hundred and forty to two hundred and eighty thousand, which would include the staff, if I'm reading this correctly, uh, the equipment, staff, the new vehicles, et cetera.
Right, and the staff we already have, we would just have to know that on the days that they're plowing, they're not at work.
Right.
So that's not, that's not a new cost for us.
Okay, and it's recommended we have further discussion before moving forward. Okay.
And it looks like, is this your recommendation or is this Mike's recommendation?
I have not seen the recommendation.
So this is Mike's. Um, so it looks like he, his recommendation is that we start to slowly pull that back and become, have it be under the ownership of this district a little at a time as we can afford to buy the, the vehicles and the, um, equipment.
Right, okay. Comments, thoughts, or what?
We'll monitor this going forward.
Monitor how?
We'll wait and see what happens, I guess, I don't know.
Well, you said monitor, so I'm just curious, what are we keeping tabs on other than...
We'll see how many new vehicles get bought, how many snowplows get mounted.
Okay.
And then it'll all have to come out of the plant facility levy dollars.
By what is being stated, I'm assuming, nothing at the moment until we formulate a plan to move forward.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Final question. Um, moving on to the new development, there was a request that came in. Um, it's like we weren't provided this with the actual childcare, um, but we did take a neutral position and I do appreciate on the Settlement Mountain Estates subdivision that we responded with, please don't.
Thank you for your offer of thirty-one thousand dollars, but it doesn't help us build a school.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's just pennies.
Yeah, so, uh, Jessica and I talked and historically, the district has always kind of had, taken a neutral stand, especially if they're offering to pay us some money, but thirty-one thousand dollars here, fifteen thousand dollars there does not help us buy land or build a school and so we need to, we felt like we needed to take a harder line and just say that this is having a negative impact on the school district and we can't support it. So, and moving forward unless the board wants us to do otherwise, this will be our message. We are struggling to keep up with what we've currently got, yeah.
We look, we have the, we have the plan, the location is just west of Bede Kiefer. The rest of the school, it's gonna be impacted.
All of the growth, for the most part, is Bede Kiefer and Garwood. Like, everything's just a sub-apparat of the district.
So the... The schools can't implement impact fees, right?
No.
Okay, but the city can. So...
And the city does for, for their infrastructure.
Hookups.
But you still, even if, even if we could collect impact fees, we couldn't collect enough impact fees from one development to build a school.
Look, the city starts up the rates for hookups for each house you could.
I, well, I think you'd end up getting maybe the thirty-one thousand that this person's offering.
Per house?
No, no.
What is it right now?
Well, the city has, uh, impact fees for water, sewer, park, and lakes.
Right.
And each one is, there's a formula that's used to, uh, establish the amount for each one.
About all the, all the houses?
Yeah, all of those commercials.
Right.
It's a different rate for commercial.
But they're not getting hundreds of thousands of dollars for any impact fees?
It's like, you know, it's like each one of those is using hundreds of dollars.
Really? Really? You need to up the rates and give the district money.
Impact fees are, are a misleading kind of entity out there. Number one, uh, you know, those, those go only on new construction. And so you're limited, some years you might get a bunch, another year you might not get any, you know, it's that kind of an up and down kind of thing. But the, the truth of the matter is you would never generate enough money through impact fees to make a significant impact in rebuilding a program. It just wouldn't happen.
They do do it on remodels now, depending on what the square footage is, you have to be reassessed. They just did that with the, um, with the fire, all the fire people put in impact fees now. So they did add that in there that it's a remodel, but you're right, it's not enough to...
So we're just saying no thank you. I don't know that it's gonna stop because the city of Raftermire has a comprehensive plan and if the developer meets every bullet point of criteria within their plan, legally, the city can't say no.
Right, exactly.
So we can, I think it's important for our community members to know that we're not being, standing on the sidelines and being silent and that we are at least opposing to the developers' the detrimental impact that continued growth is having on our district.
Right.
At one point, I had, had done quite a bit of work in creating, uh, formulas for determining what developers ought to pay based on whether it's high school or middle school or elementary school in terms of the cost of construction. And essentially, if I had a lot, we have some other way of it. For the most part, it was done by the lot and it, it turned out that it was, it was a voluntary impact fee is what it was going down to.
And we have that currently, which is why they offered the thirty-one thousand dollars, it was five hundred dollars per lot. Um, and that's what, of course, the development had given to us and so others are starting to follow suit and voluntarily offering to, to, to give us that. But even with those two, we have forty-six thousand dollars that's going into the, you know, the land fund or, um, but forty-six thousand dollars doesn't quite...
Right, yeah. Can't even buy a lot for that, a city lot.
Right.
You might be able to pick up some kind of vacated easement.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I guess, uh, I really wanted this on here so that I, you, you're all comfortable with us continuing to say no thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, especially, yeah, we are really in a...
We're in a pickle.
Especially with them saying, "Oh, everybody can go to school everywhere," you know?
Yeah.
People didn't realize they, um, people I've talked to, they thought that, like, the money came with the school. It's like, well, they just, they live in IHOS, they can go anywhere.
Yeah.
So they can go to any school now?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter where they live?
Correct.
Yeah, but we do get to set limits, which the board's gonna adopt.
We're already busting into the seams, so, you know, but yeah, they, you can go, they can go anywhere.
Right.
You know, as long as their parents willing to drive them. Yeah.
So we have dates to remember, August sixteenth, uh, we have a curriculum workshop.
That's this Wednesday?
That's this Wednesday and August twenty-eighth, we have the welcome back breakfast that we are all invited to. Um... On the input for future agenda items, for Wednesday's, Wednesday, we're having a curriculum workshop, but we are also having a special meeting, um, prior to the curriculum workshop in the sense that we have policies that we need to review and approve. Um, there are a significant amount of policies that the board has to review annually and due to situations being what they are, we, we are behind on that, so we're kind of doing a fast two-step shot. Um, that being said, I would like added to the agenda, um, a discussion with possible action item with regard to the rezoning of Garwood. I do believe that the parents that spoke tonight have the right to have this brought back to the table as has been done in the past with other issues that parents have complained about. Um, there were some, with respect to that, my biggest concern is, is I know for myself, I did not understand that we were just taking the small group and making them go away from Garwood, but everything else around them was getting the privilege of still going. I don't think that sends a very good message at all, so I do wanna re, I want to bring it back up for discussion. Um, it's two days away, it wasn't on the agenda to have further discussion, so that's why I'm not discussing it. I will put it, though, on Wednesday's meeting that we're going to have prior to the curriculum workshop.
Do we have maps or, or was all that on last month's, attached to last month's meeting? I don't remember.
No, we don't have a, we don't, I mean, we have current map, we don't have...
Yeah.
We're trying to get the new maps.
Well, I remember when you first brought the idea when you said the long-range planning was looking at it, you had, um, or maybe that was the bus route.
It was the bus routes, yeah.
That she used those maps, that's right, okay.
And I can ask her to be here with those if you want to be able to look at different parts of the district.
Or if she can...
She has to actually log in and manipulate it, so, and I don't, there, she has, there are a lot of clicks.
Okay.
I would, I wouldn't be able to do it to meet your needs.
Everybody basically, you don't get a map, or no?
Well, I think it would be beneficial to see the actual area that we've, we've alerted to parents saying, "You don't get to go to Garwood anymore." Um, because a lot of the emails I've received, it's that we've taken Majestic, but then Brookshire gets to go.
And they say it's not even built yet.
Well, not all of it, some of it is, but I, I don't recall agreeing to that, but that's just me and a lot of things roll through my head during meetings. Um, I could have misunderstood easily. Um, I don't agree with it. I don't agree with taking a small section and saying, "By the way, you don't get to go to the school that you've been going to, but these new people that are coming in get to go to your school." I don't agree with that, so I think it merits further conversation. Um, and please label it as an action item in case action needs to be taken.
Um, I already posted that agenda, I would have to amend the agenda.
It's a special meeting, it needs twenty-four hours, not forty.
So I can, okay.
You can amend it.
Okay.
Yeah, you would just amend it, but it doesn't need action by the board because it's twenty-four hours in advance.
Okay.
Any other, um, input for future agenda items?
Is this, uh, a wide-open question at this point?
Well, it's item N on the agenda.
In...
And Dennis and Nancy.
You don't, okay. Guess not, all right. So with that being said, um, we'll go ahead, I need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B F D.
So we...
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, we need to roll call votes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Grissom?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Quimby?
Yes.
With that, we are in executive session. It is nine thirty-three. Work one, she has to buy everybody's...
Yes, she does.